Said, all right, everyone, are we ready to start the meeting? It's February twenty fifth, the Blue Lake City Council second meeting or normal meeting. Everyone go ahead and stand for the flag salute. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. Uh, City Manager Mager, would you form a quorum?
Mayor Sawatsky?
Here.
Mayor Protem Scapani?
Here.
Councilmember Fire? Councilmember Napier?
Here.
Councilmember Louis Luso?
Here.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the agenda? Yes, go ahead.
Before doing so, Mr. Mayor, I have a request that two items be pulled from tonight's agenda. The first is item A, consider amendment to city manager employment agreement. There's still some further work that needs to be done on the form of the amendment. So I had a request that be continued to a future meeting. The second is one of our closed session items, uh, twelve B, real property negotiations with, um, Erin McClure as trustee. She and I are meeting next Wednesday at one o'clock, and we're going to better refine and clarify some of the outstanding items before coming to council for input and direction. So that's, um, those are the two requests that I'd ask be pulled and continued to a future meeting.
Thank you. How does council feel about those amendments?
Second.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
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 Does the public have any input on this? Yes, go ahead. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number two is adopt previous council meeting minutes.
I have a couple of adjustments to the minutes, if I may. Page two, down toward the end. Public comment closed. Just below that, um, I believe there was a motion that I'm not seeing to, uh, appoint Gloria Baker. Because then the motion is seconded, but I don't see a first motion placed. Unless I'm missing it.
So the motion happened up, further up, under five. Um, councilmember Fire motion to appoint the commissioners that have applied.
Uh huh.
And then, um, remember this was kind of tricky, the motions, and then some died and.
Right.
Um, let's see. Maybe. Yeah, I'm missing.
And I did not watch the video, I apologize.
Maybe we'd like to just bring this back to our next meeting?
I just have one more adjustment. I'm sure it was made, um, on the, on page four, down toward the bottom, there's a motion to provide immediate relief through a temp agency and follow the city manager, allow the city manager to recruit. There was a motion, and then there are discussions. And I guess it's just a technical thing that we need the motion to die before the next motion is put in.
Are you at the bottom of page four, where the motion dies for lack of a second? Or after that?
No, it's after that.
Okay. Okay, oh, I see what you're saying, so we should motion dies for lack of second, and then there was a new motion.
And unless we move, yeah. I think that was a, a different motion came in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there were, there were a lot of motions and no seconds, and then re-motion.
There was a lot.
Okay.
That was a lot.
I will, I'll go back and fix those, and I'll bring these back, um, with the next set of meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Any other changes from council on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public to comment on the meeting minutes. Yes, Adeline, go ahead.
The only thing that I talked to manager Mager about this, and I wouldn't be the first and last name of all the, uh, council person, because in the future, if you just have Mayor Sawatsky, there are several, Sawatsky's that could be, you know, and I had that problem with my last name as well. So I just recommended that they very, there always be a first and last name in.
Great, thank you for the input. Anyone else from the public like to make comment on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council for, actually, let's check on Zoom, anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council for final approval of the meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the second council minutes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously.
So you guys just pass the minutes with me making the corrections?
Yeah.
Correct, yes, apologies. All right, on to reports of council and staff. Uh, first item is city manager report.
So I am not prepared to give a full report tonight. Um, we've just got a lot of projects that we've all been working on. Um, so if you have any questions about specific projects, I'm happy to answer. Um, we did develop a public works, um, report tonight, and Chris, I believe, is here to provide that. Um, but yeah, we're just, we've just got a lot of projects that we've been working on with you guys and lots of meetings and minutes, and I did not prepare a report this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions about anything specific.
Great, thank you very much. So that was item A. Does the public have any comment on the manager report? Go ahead and move on from that if we don't.
Um, I have a comment.
Sure.
Just wondering if you could give us an update on the situation with the food service, uh, facilities, um, at, uh, Prash Hall in the park.
Absolutely. Um, so as you know, uh, we have shut down the doghouse. Um, we had a full prep kitchen, uh, permit for that facility through twenty twenty-three. Um, through the course of inspections, um, the facility operator, um, made some changes, um, in response to inspections that were made. And, uh, through the course of those inspections, um, we did not receive a, an updated permit. Um, and so we are working through that process right now, um, and have resolved, uh, any issues. Um, it was really unfortunate, um, I think we all got caught up kind of in some confusion. Um, the facility was permitted to the city as a full prep kitchen, and we worked with, uh, environmental health originally to, um, design that kitchen and, and get it all ready for operation. And then when, uh, Darcy began her operations through the doghouse, she was inspected, uh, but the, the operator is the one who is supposed to hold the operating permit, not the facility. Um, so through the course of her, um, running through that permit, it didn't get flagged that they needed to send a, an update to the doghouse. And so it got a little bit confused in translation, and it wasn't something that was really on our radar as well. Um, so we had to have environmental health come back out, look at the facility. They did ask us to make a change to the plumbing, um, to do an air gap, which we've done. Um, and Darcy is working with them on her menu. There were a couple of items that they wanted her to clarify how she was, um, preparing foods. So that's all been done. She's working with the health inspector to get her permit, and she should be open, we hope, um, in like a week or so. Um, the permit for the, uh, snack bar at the skating rink, um, that also is in the process. Uh, we can do retail sales without a permit for, um, food prep, so we can sell candy bars and chips and things. Um, but once we start going further into like, um, heat and serve type items, then we have to get a limited prep, um, permit. So we've applied for both a limited prep and a, um, I believe it's a minimal prep kitchen as well. And so Emily is working with the health department to get those permits in place, and we should have those this week as well.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, uh, or any other questions from council?
I, I had, uh, I spoken with, uh, I think it's the fellow at environmental health and what's his last name?
Ben?
Ben, thank you, that's the fella. And I think it sounded a little bit different to me, the information that was provided as far as how it tracked with requests for permits and notifications. I think they have a very solid system on how they send out notifications for, for permits, and then if they're about to expire and such. And, you know, requesting for plans before construction began on these developments. So I'd, I'd seen a lot of communication on their side as well. And I'm hoping that's something that, in the future, um, we might be able to develop something in-house that we can track it to.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, it really, the permit for the facility really wasn't on our radar because it was being operated by a concessionaire, uh, under an agreement. Um, so it really wasn't something we were tracking, and now we know to, to be better about that as well. Um, like I said, we did permit the facility as a full prep facility with environmental health originally before it went into operation because we did a full remodel on that from a, basically a snack bar, um, storage area over to a kitchen. So that took, that was quite a process to get through that. And so we did have that operating permit up till twenty, through twenty twenty-three.
I'd like to see copy of that permit.
Sure.
Just had a late date, appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? Yes, go ahead.
For starters, I wish to apologize that we're not having this meeting as per the mayor's direction in another facility. You're all standing here. I also had communication with Ben Dolph. The thing that's outstanding, according to the email I got from Ben, was, uh, not an air gap, but the range hood needs to have an inspection, and that could not be done because it takes a while to get an appointment. So that's the clarification I got directly from, uh, Mr. Bendolph at, with the DHHS Environmental Health. The other concern that had been mentioned to me before, which wasn't brought up as far as answering the question when asked by councilmember Swanny of, uh, city manager Amanda Mager, uh, regarding the facilities down there, and I've been informed that the actual kitchen that we put in, which is the main kitchen there, which is supposed to be available for people to rent or use to do prep, is not up to standard also, and that the range hood is not sufficient for that one. But I, I can be corrected on that if I'm not correct. That to me is a great troublesome thing because we have grant money and we're supposed to have a kitchen down there. And if that was done, then, then we need to correct that also. That may take a while, it may have a significant expense. Range hoods with ansel on them can frequently be fifteen thousand dollars for a range hood. So I, I will check back, uh, with Mr. Dolphin, I'm sure your staff will also take the opportunity to speak.
City Manager Mager, do you wish to respond to that?
Absolutely, yeah. So originally, when we designed the kitchen, we actually designed it with an ansel system. Um, and when we got our bids back, the ansel system was, um, almost ninety thousand dollars, which was well beyond our budget, um, to be able to do. So we scaled down the project to, um, put in a commercial hood. Uh, we had it specked out by our building official, um, to meet all of the health codes, um, and put a smaller, uh, commercial range in as well. Um, the idea also is that we are restricting, um, the type of foods that can be prepared in that kitchen to be in compliance with the hood, uh, specifications. So we knew that we would not be able to do things like frying foods or anything like that, which we don't want to do anyways because it goes into our wastewater system. And even though we have a grease interceptor in the kitchen, uh, we had concerns about our wastewater system going through the park because of, um, the, uh, the flow going out to the street. So, um, we have been working with environmental health through several grant programs to upgrade the kitchen as best we can with the resources that we have. Um, we've got a beautiful kitchen, um, everything is commercial. Um, and we are now working with the health department to see at what level we can have that facility permitted. Um, you know, it can be permitted for a limited prep, probably, um, uh, caterer style kitchen. Um, but eventually, as resources come in, we'll be able to make additional improvements, hopefully to get it to a point where it can be a full prep with limited, um, menu items. So the facility has gone through an enormous trans, transformation, um, all with grant funding. Um, but like I said, with the cost of construction and the cost to put in those types of systems, it was well beyond our resources. So we've been, um, somewhat piecing the kitchen together as we have the resources, but, uh, we're really close to being able to have that as a commercial, um, kitchen.
Great, thank you. Any more comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll move up to Zoom, go ahead, Julie.
Thank you, everybody, I hope you can hear me good tonight, um, Julie Christie. I really appreciate all that, um, dialogue about the permits, that was way more constructive than the one at the economic. I really appreciate that, thank you. Um, sorry, I just thought I'm a lamb's in, I'm a little winded. Um, I wanted to go back to a grant that we were applying for with the prior council. It was gonna be for water metering and, um, in a way that it was gonna be electronic water metering. Just curious if we were successful in that grant or if we're gonna be moving forward with that? Thank you.
Form that we were eligible for some grant funding through the state because, um, we had been flagged as a high-cost, um, city for water and, well, actually, it was just water. Um, so we worked with a state agency, and off the top of my head now, I can't remember which, uh, which agency it was, um, to apply for electronic water meters. And we were really excited about the project and, uh, wrote the full application and went through the process. And then we received notice from the agency that they had made a mistake when they reviewed our rate. So they had made a mistake when they reviewed our rate structure, and they didn't realize that our rate structure included water and wastewater. They thought our water rates, um, were high because they were seeing our wastewater rates as well. So we were disqualified from the program. Um, but we have been seeking other resources, and it is on our capital improvement plan, um, to install remote metering. Um, it's, will be a great upgrade for the city. Um, it's a great way to, um, conserve water, to catch leaks, um, early. Um, it cuts down on staff time, and we have a lot of aging, uh, meters in the city anyways. And so our goal really is to look at this coming spring, summer, um, going into next fall to, um, find the resources to be able to make those installations. It's probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to do that project. Um, but as we start looking at having to make these replacements, it's a good investment, um, and will pay itself, um, fairly, you know, fairly shortly. Um, so that's, that is high on our list to do. It was unfortunate, we were really excited that we qualified for the grant. Um, but unfortunately, it was a mistake on the granting agency's determination.
Great, thank you. Last call for comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Any final comments? All right, we'll move on to item three B, which is public work staff report. Chris, are you there? Great.
What are we gonna do tonight?
Great.
Do you want me to read this whole thing out? I know you guys all got a copy.
We, we did, uh, maybe for the public, I mean, give us a brief, give us a brief summary, that's fine, I think.
Right, um, as everybody knows here in the public, uh, we've had quite a bit of rain in the last few months, and we had some flooding and this, um, some, uh, blockages. Um, our public works employees did a great job, uh, going in and hand removing quite a few of those. And also, we got some permission from landowners to go in and use some equipment on their side to remove some stuff during flooding events to keep their property and our levees safe. Um, there was a few spots like, uh, Hatchery Road, which is historic for flooding. Um, we got one of those, uh, main culverts opened up, and it seems like it's been running really well. Um, we had some wind damage, of course, along the trails, uh, our, um, what do you call it? Along Taylor Way, uh, through up to Museum Strip. Um, and we had to remove and or prune back some of that stuff. Um, and lighter side of it, we went, entered an agreement with Coruna Rescue up off of Neeland, and we have four, four new residents out at the wastewater plant who are helping me mow the grass. Um, they're doing a great job, they're my, my favorite employees. Um, project planning right now, we're doing, uh, Mandy mentioned, uh, some upgrades to, uh, monitoring, and we're also doing the same thing with our wastewater side. Um, try to reduce the impact of, um, cost and employee involvement in, um, physical involvement in the monitoring and making it more, uh, up to date, twenty-first century. So we can have, um, uh, remote monitoring of all our systems and be able to respond better to our alarms.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions from, uh, council on this item? Any questions from the public on this item? Yes, go ahead.
Comment, I live next to the creek, watch it pretty close, and I'm not worried, I just like this blowing lap door, so I wanted to man.
Yeah. Yeah. Skylar and Mike did most of the work, they went in there, and since we are regulated with a lot of things and what we can do within the creek bed, it was a lot of handwork that, that they did, and both those guys did all the work.
Great, uh, yes, I can't see you, but go ahead, stand up and.
Oh, yeah, uh, we have our DI around, so we call it, um, which are drain inlets, and, um, every time there's a big rain event, uh, Russo's right there, there's a big flow right there, we go. Um, there's a bar screen at his place that we go clean out, and then any other, other known suspects, our guys go and clean up and try to do, yeah. And even before, you'll see him out there digging leaves and litter out of the DI's if we think there's gonna be a big rain event coming around.
Um, we'll just wait till we bring it back, thank you. Uh, anyone else in the public? Sure. Do you mind bringing that forward to public comment, and then we can go ahead and address that then? I apologize. Just, just raise your hand and we'll, we'll bring your item back up, thank you very much. Um, Julie Christie, we have a couple of comments or questions for you, Chris, looks like Julie Christie, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, you guys, I totally spaced putting mute on, I'm so sorry. Um, Chris and council, thank you so much. Um, I know this wasn't like a formal decision to put on public's work report, but it's something I always thought would be a really unique, cool thing for us to do. And so I'm just saying thank you, and I'd like to see them continue, I really support them, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Linda Cooley, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Chris during the last big rain after we had flooding this last year. I saw him down there on a Sunday, making sure that we were safe on Taylor Way. I greatly appreciate it. Um, last year was a little bit scary, so thank you to all the city employees who are out there making sure we were okay.
Great, thank you. Uh, sorry, I can't re, I see Humboldt something, I can't read the rest of your name, I think it's D O?
D D Orlandi. Um, this might be a little out of order, but is there a mic for people that are asking questions there? Cause we can't hear, I can't hear them at all over Zoom.
I'll make sure to have them come up, I appreciate the input. Um, for the rest of the meeting, we'll have them come forward and speak into the microphone, I apologize. Or, yeah, Chris, would you pass the mic?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Um, any other comments, um, from the public before we bring it back to council?
I'd like to say one more thing.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the last thing, um, always, please, if you guys are interested, please come down and take a tour of our plant. Um, the other thing I forgot to bring up was, we've had, we did our bi-annual, which, uh, we've been upgraded past few years from annual to every two years for our testing, and we are still within limits and are testing historically low on that for our, uh, groundwater intrusion out there at the wastewater plant. So if anybody has any questions, comments, come visit, it'd be great.
Great, thank you. Uh, last comments from council, yes.
Yeah, you know, I, for all the things that we hear, uh, people would like to have addressed here within Blue Lake, I've not once heard anybody say, I don't like the water, or I'm not getting any water. So, um, I think you guys are really, it seems like you're doing a great job with the water and sewage, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, I think under, this kind of falls under the stormwater runoff, and I know that previously, we had a resident from Broderick, um, expressing, uh, that they're really, they're getting a lot of discharge off of Prash Hall. Um, that those drains are actually draining into the yard, and I'm wondering if that is on your bucket to, uh, to examine and possibly reroute that drainage?
I know it is, and I can let Mandy elaborate on that if she wants to.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was doing Zoom things, can you repeat that question?
Certainly, yes.
Prash Hall runoff.
Oh, yeah, so Prash Hall, we, um, got bids for, as you guys know, we have a new roof on Prash Hall. Um, the next phase of that was getting new gutters. Um, so we finally got, um, our three quotes for the gutters, and I believe we're in the queue, um, for the spring to get gutters installed, so.
Okay. Are there any active plans for mitigation in the meantime, given this, uh, this resident has lodged numerous requests for assistance on this?
Um, I don't believe there's any real option to do much more than what is there right now. Um, we're really limited because we share a very, very tight, um, property line that doesn't allow us a lot of room to be able to get in and do much. Her fence line is like literally right up against the building almost, so, um, overhang is kind of just the nature of how that facility was built back in the day, and I'm not sure who's, um, I mean, I think Prash was probably there first, so I'm not really sure, um, how the other property was developed, um, with that, you know, large of an overhang right on that fence line. Um, Chris, you've probably been back there to see, I mean, we've cleared out all the berry briers.
I cannot walk down there, I have to turn sideways, that's how close the fence is to Prash Hall. So, um, we are mitigating that, and that's just what we can do at the moment. There has been a lot of work done there, but there's, there's no room to put in like, uh,
French drain or anything.
Deferment or drain, and that's all in plans right now, but it has to, we have to have gutters first before any of that goes in.
Well, it seems that this resident has been bearing the burden, um, for this discharge for some time, and I, I hope that rather than saying we just can't fit back there, if we can at least bring it back to reconsideration on ways that we can, uh, redirect some, at least some of that water. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Any other questions for Chris? All right, thank you very much, Chris, appreciate your time.
Bye, everybody.
All right, we're moving on to item number four, this is public comment, and this is the time to go ahead and bring forward anything that is not on the agenda with public. Oh, apologies, uh, does anyone, do we have any, um, council reports?
Uh, I went to the Humboldt Waste Management Authority, I'm not gonna take the time today to, uh, report out completely, but I would like to say I really appreciated the work of Eric Keller Heckman and his team there at the Humboldt Waste Management Authority, and I would enjoy Eric coming to a meeting and, um, doing a presentation for us in the future, but yay Humboldt Waste Management Authority, that's all I need to say.
Kat, do you have anything to report on?
Yes, Humboldt County Association of Governments, and, um, as you know, they deal a lot with our transportation here in Humboldt County. They work really well together, the different, uh, townships, and looking at the monies available to make repairs to our roads and to address, uh, transport needs. And one of the things that they're expressing, and this won't come as a surprise, but, uh, a level of anxiety about, uh, how much funding there might be in the future at a state and federal level for these. So we can, we can expect to maybe make some adjustments in what our expectations are and being able to address some. So we can, we can expect to maybe make some adjustments in what our expectations are and being able to address some road repairs in the future. Um, and I, I think that they're trying to get ahead of this as quickly as they can. Uh, the second meeting just last night with the, uh, Redwood Regional Economic Development Commission and, uh, really nice group of folks there as well. And, uh, we had a presentation from the union hall regarding, uh, project labor agreements. And this is, we have, uh, we do have a union hall, uh, there's the local seven fifty-one, the carpenters, which I've actually have done presentations and development for their, uh, pre- apprenticeship programs. And what the, uh, the project labor agreements allows us to do is to put a percentage of labor, uh, that we expect that would be involved in this project and it can be apprentices, it can be union individuals. And what it does is rather than these projects taking the monies, uh, bringing in people from outside the area, we could say, for instance, within the terms of a contract, say we would like to have twenty-five percent of the people to be local through the union halls. And while we might be concerned that that adds to the expense, because if we think union wages, we might think fifty dollars an hour. Out of that, half of that is for healthcare, for other fees, just as, uh, any other organization pays for their individuals. It's just folded into the hourly, uh, hourly rate. So I think that we have some opportunities in head, ahead and I hope the council may be able to, um, look further into the concept having pro, uh, project labor agreements because it helps keep those dollars local and I think Mike Wilson also could speak to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other reports out from staff?
I went to an RCEA meeting, but I'm going to hold my report till the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
No report today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, does the public wish to comment on our reporting?
Did I miss your general public comment?
No, you have not. We've moved things around a little bit. Uh, Ju, sorry, go ahead.
Just so, and just for council, so I reordered the, um, agenda tonight to be compliant with the municipal code. Um, so after this meeting, you guys can give us some feedback. Um, that's one of the things that we can address through the update of the, um, the manual and eventually the code, but how this format works, but this is the, the, um, the order that's directed in the code. That's why it looks a little, it's a little clunky tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, Julie Christie, go ahead on Zoom.
I'm going to chime in on Kat's report. Kat, I just want to say I'm really proud to have you at HCOG. There's going to be a lot going on there. Your reports have been very thorough. And I appreciate that and please keep us informed on especially measure oats, vineyards headed your guides this way. And that the format's very uniform for other municipalities, so we'll get used to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, go ahead. My phone?
Hi, yeah, my name is Anthony and I just, um, I wanted to readdress something someone had mentioned earlier. It's kind of, um, uh, sounds like it's not ideal to have a lot of people who are standing outside wanting to be a part of the meeting. And, um, I just want to politely suggest that it is a good idea to postpone anything that would want to, that a lot of people would want to participate. And as it's, uh, um, the Brown Act would be a good reason to do that. Um, it says that if capacity is an issue, finding a larger venue is, uh, a good idea to accommodate the anticipated attendance. And, uh, I just also want to say that it sounds like there's a lot of good people over there and, um, I, uh, appreciate Blue Lake and everybody in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to let you know that I did attempt to make extra room. Thank you. Sure. Great. Just want to let everyone know Elise told me to go ahead and read the entire public comment. That's what the note said on it. I apologize for that. Um, so the public, so we're going to move, go ahead and move on to item number four. Uh, the public is invited to present petitions, make announcements or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope and authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for public input for the public input session. To assert that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose three, or excuse me, time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. So again, if you don't, if, if the item is already on the agenda, hold on until we get to that item. Um, this. So, uh, we're now in public comment. Scott, there was one gentleman in front of you, if you don't mind if he goes first.
Not at all.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Obviously, we don't have adequate meeting place. Cause people are standing outside in the cold trying to listen through the window. This is from the, um, California Public Meetings Act. And it states that, um, notice requirements for a meeting like this requires that a proper notice be of all regular meetings, including the time, date, location and agenda must be provided to the public at least seventy-two hours in advance of, of the meeting. Notice must be posted in a location that is freely accessible to the public and on the agency's official website if they have one. So obviously posting it on the website is not adequate. It should be posted where they normally put postings, which has not happened this time. For some reason, there's nothing at the post office where you normally have all your little postings in the little cabinets. I checked this morning to see whether it had been moved like you were suggesting in crash hall. And there's nothing there that says anything about this meeting. So I think this meeting is illegal and should be postponed, not just out of the fact that it's illegal, but that it's inadequate for the people that want to participate.
May I make one comment?
Go ahead. Lori, can you make your way up to the front? Will that be difficult for you?
Do you want to pass the microphone?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Lori Ponte. I've been here before. I have something completely different to, um, share. The, uh, I've been working with Jennifer Kramer in the Grange on putting together potlucks. We had one in the park during the summer. We had one in November at the Grange and after all the beautiful renovations that are going on, we have one planned for Saturday, March twenty-ninth. The whole community's invited. It's a potluck, so bring what you like, bring something to share. Um, and I just wanted to kind of hit this meeting from a completely different perspective, something positive. We've had a lot of good people show up and, um, everyone's invited, so it'll be about eleven o'clock on Saturday, March twenty-ninth. And it'll be spring, we hope, hopefully no rain and we have, we want people all ages, kids and it was a really nice turnout in November. So spread the word, we will have stuff posted on Facebook. Uh, wherever we can post it in town. At the Grange, at the Grange, November, Saturday, November, I'm sorry, March twenty-ninth, eleven o'clock and it'll go until we're all tired of each other and we want to go home. So anyway, that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Ryan, quick question for you, point of order. Uh, do we need to cancel the meeting because there are people outside or I just want to make sure that we're good on that?
No, um, the capacity is what it is. Um, and so, and so that is. There's no obligation to, um, expand to a larger facility when capacity is exceeded. We do provide the Zoom option and the ability to participate through Zoom for that reason.
Great, thank you very much for the point of verification. Um, or go ahead, Ryan.
I can just confirm, I confirmed with the city manager that it was posted in three different locations, seventy-two hours in advance and a freely accessible location. Plus on the website, so I have no concerns there.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, please go ahead and answer that and we'll continue.
Posted at City Hall, it's posted at the bulletin board outside of the post office because part of our problem right now is the post office is locking down. So when we go to do our posting, we can't get in. It's posted at the Grange and then, um, did I say the city's website as well? So I posted at Friday nights, um, and it's usually after five by the time I get the full packet all completed and all the agendas printed and everything. So we haven't been able to get in before they've been able to close or lock it down. So it's always posted on the bulletin board outside, um, the post office as well. And like I said, our normal postings are City Hall, the Grange, out by the post office and on the website.
Thank you very much. Uh, Scott, you're next, I believe.
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, and we all noticed we have an overflow capacity crowd tonight. And Mayor, thanks for attempting to find a bigger venue. That would have been great. Uh, my comment is you obviously have a lot of interest in some of your agenda items and some coming up that are listed as action items. And I would encourage you not to take any irrevocable actions tonight with the overcapacity crowd and the difficulty of getting in and out of the door because my hearing's not as good as some people's, particularly outside. Um, and I think it's great that you have this much interest. And I might stick around long enough to make specific comments on your later agenda item, but I might not. So I'm really concerned that the, um, facility isn't really accommodating the interest you have in the agenda. Thank you.
Just, uh, just want to let you know two of our items have been canceled. Uh, uh, item eight consideration, um, amendment to city manager position and also, uh, a closed session item. Yes, go ahead.
If you're referring to me, I just wanted to add that one good reason would be to postpone the meeting in fire and safety codes. If you're overcapacity, then it's just, it's just not right. It's important to find a building that can, that you know, allow everybody to participate in an important decision for Blue Lake.
Thank you very much.
To that last speaker, uh, I've objected to the posting they have. They say we're supposed to have a hundred and forty-seven people in this room. There's no way we could. So, uh, again, repeatedly I brought this to attention of your building inspector who said the fire marshal said we can get a hundred and forty-seven people in here, standing on each other's shoulders apparently. Um, I, I did wish to make, make comment on a, an item that has been removed from the agenda, so therefore I can, appropriate for me to make comments on it since it's been removed. Um, I wanted to apologize to, um, to Erin Beth McClure regarding her tank site up there that, that the city's trying to negotiate. One of the biggest roadblocks in my opinion is the lack of ability of the city to secure the site. She's had, uh, pictures of, of one person up there, I think eighteen times in the last month. Whole bunch of other people up there. Her concern is, is, and I could totally understand it, not wanting to have the tank there. The city cannot have a site where people feel like going there. So if the citizens of Blue Lake are wandering on someone else's property to go up there trespassing illegally, uh, you are causing a very large chance that you will not have access to have a water tank up there because I wouldn't do it. Which is told by city staff, well, it's up to the sheriff to enforce. Well, if you have a system where you have cameras, those are set up so you can see somebody up there and you can call the sheriff. But until such time in the city, uh, does this, I would strongly suggest to, to Erin that she not even consider an option as far as the city being able to use that site. So, though for those of us on property, uh, we strongly have objections. The people feel they can tromp around on our property. It's liability for us. If someone gets hurt there, we may get sued. It's not their business to be there and unless you have permission to be on someone else's property anywhere, I highly recommend, uh, you stay on, uh, civic property. You do not trespass because you can have major consequences on the desires of people to work with the city, myself included.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Yes, go ahead.
I'm Terry Davis and, um, when we went on our field trip up to the airport, I came home and got this, um, emergency response guide from Tesla. The reason I chose it is because we looked at, um, those type of batteries up in, uh, at the airport. And when we had our meeting on Sunday, I believe that the people from Power Transitions and, um, the other company that spoke, um, were both not necessarily forthcoming with the
Point of order.
That was said by Tetra Tech that they would be using
This is an agenda item. I'm really sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's about our town hall. It's about our town.
I mean, go, I mean, go ahead and finish up. I apologize. I'm not trying to interrupt you. We just do have an agenda item for this. So this is public, huh? I mean, eh, go, go ahead and continue. Let's just finish it up. Uh, next time, let's go ahead and try, have it with the agenda item.
Using lithium ion phosphate solid state batteries so that no liquid electrolyte would go into the community. There are not solid state batteries. They are still in the labs being worked on. So that was not a true statement. It was also said that you could just shut them down. In this manual, it says that you cannot shut off the power to the product because it does not de-energize the battery and it remains a shock hazard. Um, it, so that would not be a truthful statement. Jim from the, uh, Power Transition said that the batteries could be immersed in water. Nothing would happen. It's manual, it says. Warming in case of floods, stay out of the water. If any part of this product or its wiring is submerged, um, that you would need to stay out of the water. It also says the storage area must be protected from flooding. And the other thing that it says is that these products contain lithium ion batteries and they are a source of energy. Do not short circuit, puncture, incinerate, crush, immerse or exposed to high temperatures. If you do, they can have internal or external short circuit and that can cause significant overheating and thermal runaway. Um, the other thing that they said is if they catch on fire, you let it burn and it doesn't affect the surrounding containers. This says that you must position the attack lines to protect the neighboring battery.
Point of order, please. Point of order, Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is, this really is the agenda item. I, I apologize. If you want to go ahead and forward this item to me, I'd love to have all this information in my email and I'll go ahead and review it. Um, and then if you want to go ahead and present during the actual agenda item, that'd be fine as well. Thank you very much. Any other non-agenda items from the public? Seeing none from the public, we'll go ahead and bring it up to Zoom. Go ahead, Julie Christie.
Thank you, John. Um, are you guys able to hear me okay tonight? For the best part. Um, so many amazing comments prior to mine. It does warm my heart to know there's so many people coming out and speaking up. We know our venue is pretty tight for real attendance. I do have a suggestion that perhaps we could work something out with the school gymnasium. The seating's very easy. They have the P A, they have wifi. Parking's not the best, but it really would accommodate big numbers a little bit better than the other venues such as crash, the Grange and the Fire Hall, just as a suggestion. Um, I really want to thank Lori for bringing up the potluck and all the work at the Grange. Um, that's going to be something that I inspire the rest of our community starts getting to really know each other outside of, um, you know, meetings and other discussions online. Thank you Kent for bringing up the fact that item eight, it was pulled from the agenda. We can discuss it. I was going to request that it would be as well. There was no packet material. We should have had a recommendation and something in there that we could have wrote in prior in regards to. And also with our prior speaker in town hall, I will make comments on that, but in a different manner. I just want to thank everybody for showing up. I was delivering piggies. I have another pig in labor right now. So I just really appreciate our community that shows up for everybody. I did feel like the vibe there though, from the presenter, from me being from the outside looking in, did seem really condescending and negative. And it just kind of reminds me of last town halls that we've had. And I really inspired that we have some that can finally be in positive dialogue with the fact that we're not fact that we're not being told what's going to happen in a condescending way, like we're little children. We're not little children and we all have valid points and all should be respected to gain respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, Andrew, go ahead. All right. Oh, here, there it goes. Yeah, I think we can hear you. Go ahead and try. Yeah, I think so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. I wanted a remark on a couple of points, uh, now. And the first is that, uh, you've obviously, uh, have a venue that's incapable of accommodating the number of people. And your council has attempted to make an excuse for that. And, and I would just say that, um, it's laughable because the folks outside can't hear what's going on. And, and that is an essential part of a public meeting. So it doesn't really matter if they could log into Zoom, um, or if, you know, some other avenues is appointed to them. They showed up at the venue and they can't hear the proceedings, right? So they can't hear, uh, the mayor, for example, denigrate a public speaker. And I think that that in and of itself is, is a reason to cancel this meeting right now. Uh, secondly, and, and this is really disturbing and it's, you know, hopefully it's not a, a, a way of our democracy, but, uh, Mr. Mayor, you, you derided someone that was providing public comment not only once, not only twice, but three times while she was trying to make her statement. And it's fine that whatever her comments were, were pertinent to an agenda item. That was her time. It was not yours. And I just ask that you respect the remainder of the people that, you know, are here tonight to, to, to make a comment and you don't interrupt them. And please don't interrupt me. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, let's see, let's go ahead and, um, any more, uh, Andrew, you want to go ahead and mute? Apologies.
Yeah, that's on the mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead. Oh. Um, who, uh, would, go ahead and comment and then if you'd make sure she gets the mic when you guys are done with that.
Sandra Maddy, right? And maybe I'm old, but I can't hear you people. The only person I can hear is Mandy. So I guess I'm getting old.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely work on that. I apologize. We're working on getting hopefully some amplification systems in here at some point. Yeah, maybe. All right. We have some more, we have some more public that wish to comment. Yes, you go ahead.
My name is Jackie Ginn. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Jackie.
That's good because I have exactly the same problem that, um, all of you council members. I really can't hear very well. What I would suggest, eh, eh, you know, politely suggest is that you pretend you are speaking to a multitude without a microphone. Because I, as I understand it, this microphone is for the Zoom people. And, um, if we can't hear you very well, I mean, I've been sitting here kind of leaning up trying to hear. I don't think my hearing is that bad. But anyway, that's just what I would like to suggest. Project like you're on stage.
Thank you all. Thank you. I'll work on that. There was another comment in the back. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I just want to clarify that the mayor did not disparage or, uh, mock people outside. He worked and tried to, um, get a facility that would be more accommodating to everybody and he was denied. And everyone in this room and everyone outside of this building had the foresight that this was going to be, uh, the situation tonight. And, uh, the mayor did do his due diligence to try to lock down a facility that would be more accommodating. So that was a misunderstanding for the prior speaker. I just wanted to clarify.
Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next.
I have a question. Can somebody tell me how many people are outside? Ten, twenty?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So speaking for the people outside, we can hear better than you can in this room. And it's actually quite cool out there. So we're enjoying it out there. So thanks for worrying about us, but we, we're okay.
Thank you. We're going to keep on checking on you guys out there. All right, so we have no, uh, more public comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for the consent agenda.
I would like to move that we accept the consent agenda.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right, the next item is, uh, commission appointments. Um, city manager mega, do you want to go ahead and fill us in on that?
All right. So you currently have, uh, four openings on the Public Safety Commission, two openings on Economic Development, one opening on the Parks and Recreation Commission and three openings on the Arts and Heritage Commission. Um, these have all been listed in accordance with the Matty Act and, um, you have received, uh, five applications for Public Safety Commission, one application for Parks and Rec Commission, two for Economic Development. Um, for your Public Safety Commission, you currently have one commissioner. So you have four slots. You have four Blue Lake residents that have applied for that, um, for, for the positions and one within the sphere of influence. Um, for the Parks and Recreation Commission, you have one applicant, James Brown. He is a current commissioner and is asking to, uh, re-up his commission. And on Economic Development, you have Roxanne Rothery and Darcy Lima, who are also, uh, current commissioners, who are also asking to be considered for reappointment.
All right, council, you want to go ahead and begin our discussion?
I would like to note that, um, for the Parks and Rec Commission and the Economic Development Commission and one of the four, um, vacancies on the Public Safety Commission, we have not had our required thirty days of noticing for those positions. We, um, we have had thirty days at this time for the three vacancies on Public Safety, but not for those other vacancies. Um, that posting, um, was made on the website on, um, I believe it was February fifth. And so, um, we're, uh, ten days shy of the required thirty day notice for those positions.
So that is, um, so right now we would only be clear for three of the Public Safety Commission seats.
Correct.
Sorry, I was asking Elise if it is correct that we only have, uh, three of the Public Safety Commission, uh, seats that have already made their thirty day or more posting.
Any other comments from council?
I, I do wonder, um, if any other applicants have come in today before Fri- or between Friday and today that aren't included in the packet?
One came in late this afternoon for Economic Development, but it was, um, I mean, the packets posted on Friday is closed.
Right, but that there's not a closing window for the applicants that I've seen in it by, by way of ordinance.
No, but you can't, you can't bring that forward today. So it wasn't part of the, the packet.
Okay, and there was, uh, just one for one. Okay, thank you.
It, the, the people applying, reapplying for their positions, are they here tonight? And we can quickly interview them and?
I saw Darcy. Um, I saw Roxanne on Zoom. There's Roxanne.
Yeah.
Uh, Rebecca Collins is here, Justin Goat is here, Adeline is here. I'm not.
We already interviewed Ted.
Um, I don't know if Donald is here. And I'm not sure if James is here or if he could be on Zoom.
Can, can anybody tell us if Donald Shang is, is in the room or outside? Looking for Donald Shang. He's one of the applicants to the Public Safety Commission. Not here. Okay, thank you.
I just want to check in with the council. Do we want to go ahead and postpone for the thirty days or do we want to push this through?
I would like to, um, put some people on the Public Safety Commission.
Yeah, I, I think we could move forward with those three on the Public Safety Commission. Um, I think that we're kind of bound to wait for the thirty days on the others, but at least we could fill those three.
Okay, great. Let's take care of that and then we'll move on to the others. Have we interviewed everyone for the Safety Commission? I know Adeline has not been interviewed yet. Is that correct? Is there anyone else who hasn't been interviewed?
And Parks and Rec Commission has been noticed under the Matty Act. That was a commission that was being vacated, a commission, an expiration. So that has been noticed since December.
Okay.
That that was coming up. So you shouldn't have, there should be no problem dealing with, uh, Parks Recreation as well.
Okay, great. Adeline, uh, would you go ahead and stand up and present?
Hello. I'll try to use my teacher's voice here. I am, um, wanting to be on the Public Safety Committee. And the reason I want to be on that commission is first of all, I'm very interested in our policing situation here in Blue Lake. Um, our contract with the sheriff expires June thirtieth of this year. And we may want to look at other options like contracting with another city or we may want to continue with the sheriff. As many of you know, I was on the ad hoc committee last summer that negotiated with the sheriff and we were able to get a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar contract down to one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So I'm very proud of that. I'm very interested in continuing with policing issues. Secondly, two hundred and forty-five Blue Lake citizens voted for me for city council. That's the same exact number as who voted for Catherine Napier. Only five less than John Sawatsky. The message here is two hundred and forty-five citizens of Blue Lake wanted me to continue as a leader in our city government. I feel this is a way of honoring that message from the voters of Blue Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Did you want to ask me any questions?
Yeah, go, yeah. Councils, any questions for Adeline?
Um, I, I understand why you want to be part of the Public Safety Commission. I just wanted to ask just a little bit deeper into that. What would you be bringing as far as, um, a commissioner, uh, for this particular commission, I guess? It's kind of a big commission, but very empty right now.
Yeah, it's very empty and it's very necessary that we get these, um, openings filled. You know, I'm looking at my twelve years as mayor. I'm looking at my twenty years as the city council. I've dealt with a lot of policing issues. I dealt with some not very comfortable issues and some old timers will realize what I'm talking about from the past. So I'm really, um, focused on something that works for Blue Lake, that's good for Blue Lake, and I think I can make a difference on this commission and in a positive way.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Go ahead and open this up for public comment on just the, um, Safety Commission. Yes, go ahead.
This is a very important commission. Part of what we perceived here is a Safety Commission item, I think, by our also, anyway. I'll wait just a second.
Just give us one moment here while we wait for this to clear. We want to make sure everyone can hear. City manager mega, do you need to go or anything?
Thank you. Um, Safety Commission is very important. Part of, part of what this commission needs to work on are some desires of the public. I know a very important issue is safety on I Street. Uh, the local citizens did not want to have a roundabout there, but they did wish to have a four-way stop to slow traffic down. And that needs to be addressed and brought forward. That was a unanimous, uh, by the people and thing. We had a discussion regarding the two items. Nothing happened. Again, on I Street, it's been report repeatedly pointed out that we have a very large redwood root underneath the road who acts as a speed bump and there's no signage there, warning people of that. So I think we need people that are going to be on this commission that are willing to, to represent the people on these important topics and listen to the people who have their concerns. And that's one of the biggest criterias on any commission. It's willing to listen to the people and then follow through with those concerns. That hasn't been happening on our prior commission in many items. And I hope the new commission appointments will, will pledge themselves to go ahead and listen to the people's concerns within the small communities and address them in a manner we would like. Thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take it up to Zoom. Go ahead, Julie.
Yes, thank you, um, Julie again, and thank you for taking a moment of pause from the sirens. That was pretty coincidental. Um, I just wanted to give thanks too to Jason and Kim who did serve on our Public Safety and, and stepped down recently. We have, um, been delinquent with a meeting because of that and a lot coming up. So I do appreciate the applicants. However, I have the same sentiment as Kent that, um, this is a pretty big commission as far as I'm concerned. We really only have two commissions, well, Parks Rec, Economic and Public Safety that we really should be focused on. And I do believe Public Safety should be number one. So I applaud our applicants and let's keep them coming in. We can always have more people sitting on board to jump in and, um, we've got a lot going on, so please listen to our council and our public and I think, um, our applicants will fit right in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yes, I was, I, I was just waiting to be unmuted. Thank you. So at, at the end of my comment on the last agenda item, the city manager, uh, for some reason decided that it was, um, you know, necessary to, um, correct me. Yeah, and you're, and you're interrupting me and, and you're ignoring my last comment. So, uh, the city manager was incorrect. Are you going to interrupt me?
Andrew, I'm going to go ahead and listen, but go ahead.
Yeah, good, good for you. Yeah, go for it. What, what do you want to say? Don't ask.
Okay, uh, I would have wanted that we please remove him from the, uh, discussion for obvious reasons.
Advised from legal, perhaps.
Yeah, I, I, this, this section is for public comment on the particular agenda item. If he doesn't have a comment as to that item, we can move on.
Andrew, you want to go ahead and try again?
I do have a comment on that item, but you, you're, you're interrupting me. So I, I can't effectively comment.
Go ahead.
I think we move forward.
So, 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 so as I said, you extended the prior agenda item by virtue of comment from your city manager, which was- by virtue of comment from your city manager, which was inaccurate. And therefore I'm utilizing this time because I don't have another time. Good, good job. Yeah, just, just cut us off, cut us off.
Thank you, Andrew. I appreciate your time.
I know, I know.
Thank you, Christopher.
Yeah, good job.
Andrew, I give me a mo, give me a moment here. And anyone else on Zoom want to comment? Uh, last call from public on comment. We'll go, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for a decision on the Safety Commission.
So since one of the applicants is, uh, my partner, I'm gonna recuse myself from the discussion of choice. Um, I did want to bring up, I don't have, uh, it with me, but I did want to bring up that the Public Safety Commission of the five, um, member commission. Um, we are required to live in town, two can be in the sphere of influence, and this commission allows for two advisory members to be appointed. Um, and those advisory members are able to sit in for any absent, uh, commissioner and vote um, during meetings if, if a commissioner is absent. So, uh, just keeping that in mind as those point of, um, kinds of interest, I think.
Anyway, keeping that in mind is there's quite a bit of interest, um, I think is, is, is a good thing. And also, um, since Mr. Shang has not been to either one of the two, um, meetings where, um, this commission appointment was to be discussed. Um, I would have reservations about appointing him as we seem to be appointing people at times that, that can't get to the meetings and don't go to the commission meetings either. So.
And just to clarify, we have four openings on the public safety or three?
Only three today that we can move forward with.
Only three today that we can move forward with.
All right, so do we want to, um, let's go ahead and have, um,
How do we format this?
I think one at a time.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I would like to make a nomination based on our interviews last time and the applications that we received. As a former, uh, uh, member in the military in the US Army, I am familiar with the work that MPs would do. I'm happy to report I'm not too familiar with the work that they would do. Uh, but I feel that Ted Hales qualifications are outstanding. I also have worked with him at the Grange. He's been tremendously reliable and amenable, uh, in working with others. So, uh, I'd like to nominate Ted Hales for a position, uh, on the Public Safety Commission.
We have a
I have a second thought.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
So I believe your ordinance says that if applicants that live within the city apply, they take precedent over, uh, applicants outside of the city.
I, I've reviewed those ordinances. I have not seen anything that gives preference. I do see a number that could be allowed within the sphere. There's a ratio, but there's nothing that dictates on preference.
I believe it does.
Yeah, we need clarification. I mean, how long's the certification gonna take on that? Thank you. I said, how long is the clarification going to take on that? We're trying to clarify whether or not a resident that is not, that is in, within the sphere of influence can be appointed, um, above someone who lives directly in the city. Um, not, I apologize. Yes. They are looking right now for the answer, yes. We have too many this time. It's a rare event. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I do have on membership for Public Safety Commission. This is under Title II Administration and Personnel. Under men, membership two point two four point oh three zero. Can you hear me in the back? Great. The Public Safety Commission shall consist of five members. No fewer than three shall be residents of the city of Blue Lake. And the remaining members must either live, work, or conduct business in the geographical area encompassed within a three-mile radius of Blue Lake City Hall. And preference will be given to those living within the city limits. So Mandy stands correct.
I knew I read it somewhere.
Okay, moving on, I would like to, uh, first nominate or appoint, recommend an appointing, uh, Adeline Jones for the Safety Commission.
Yeah, second that.
We have a first and a second.
You need to turn your mic on.
We
Since this isn't about, uh, Ted Hales, is the other council member allowed to be in a vote here or no?
Uh, I would
What makes sense?
Can we get a point of clarification on that?
Yeah, I, I think it's her abstention. Um, and I think she mentioned that she would abstain from any consideration of the appointments.
Okay.
But
Thank you.
It's up to her.
Great.
All right, we had, we had a first and a second, uh, for the nomination of Adeline Jones to the Public Safety Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So it was three to one with Napier dissenting.
No, I, I didn't vote either way. Um, I give that an aye.
Great, thank you. So that's all.
For
For, yes. All right, do we have another nomination? Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Justin.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Um, I would like to have a discussion on that.
Sure, yes, go ahead.
Um, first, I just want to confirm that, Justin, you are now a Blue Lake resident. Is that correct? Welcome back. That's good. Um, something that I have seen that falls somewhere within, uh, conflict of, of interests um, does fall, and many cities right now are explicitly putting in the language that prohibits employees of a city serving on their commissions or on their councils. And I think that we've already seen, um, some of the dissent and distrust that is created by having, uh, a, a council member become an employee or was an employee, become a council member. Um, but I think that, um, that it does extend to contract employees. I've seen language on that. Um, this is a gray area. It is not explicitly, explicitly black or white. But I did want to inform the, uh, the public that many municipalities are putting explicit language that prohibits employees from serving on their councils and commissions, um, because of the potential for conflict of interest. Um, there's other language too. It doesn't fall exactly with conflict, uh, conflict of, uh, of interest. But I think the, the concept is readily understood by all. So uh, I just, I wanted to put that, that out to the council, out to the council and see what their thoughts are on that in this instance.
I agree with you. I think we've already had enough drama with the, uh, council members and, and, um, people working for the city being associated with commissions.
Is Justin an employee, contract employee? How, does that make any difference? Maybe not.
Yeah, he's just contracted to, um, provide, uh, recording services. So it's a very specific task-based contract.
But it, it is still a level of employment and
And I don't believe that we have that policy. So I mean, it's something you could develop.
I'm sorry.
I mean, it's definitely something that you could bring back or develop or ask staff to look into. Um, but at this time, I don't believe we have any language or policies, um, to that effect. And we did look into that, um, at length when, uh, we had an employee, um, had a council member apply for employment.
And then I wanted to, um, go back to when we were looking at our liaison appointments, and I think that, um, there was a discussion, uh, Ryan concerning a possible conflict between being on the, um, on the Chamber of Commerce as a liaison or, and I think this was, uh, one of the things that Christopher is looking at, either economic development, uh, but had involvement with the Chamber of Commerce. And, and, you know, it's, it's difficult to bring this forward, Justin, because you're very active and these are all good things. But we also have to look at how many layers could kind of get folded and tangled in with each other. Um, so that's why I'm bringing this up. I felt like there was a parallel where we had spoken about a con, a potential conflict with being on the Chamber Commission, uh, Chamber of Commerce and then also working as a commission. So, uh, a, again, I think that this appointment could be problematic. I don't think the problem is the person, but I think it is the engagement of employment in, and also being involved on the commission with that same employer.
I don't foresee this being any, you know, uh, against the code in any way, shape or form. Um, I think we go with the vote.
All right, uh, so you want to go ahead and, uh, we have a first and a second and so apologies, who, who was it?
Chris and Michelle.
Chris and Michelle, great. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. It does, it's a pie. What, what's our? Most guys, thank you. All right, um.
Um, I'd like to make a quick note. Can we, is Roxanne here with us on Zoom? Can she go ahead and do her interview if she wants to, just like we did with the pri, previous candidates?
I think we're still on the Public Safety, right?
Yeah.
Is Roxanne applying for Public Safety?
No.
It's okay. Elise, are you coming back? We're still voting on. Uh, it didn't pass, so no. And yeah, I Nice. All right, so we, we
We have one.
We still have candidates, correct?
Right.
And we still have two positions?
Two positions, two candidates.
Okay, great. Um, can we get a nomination, some more nominations?
Well, we were having to go in sequence then to preference for Blue Lake residents. Uh, we have Rebecca Collins who, um, has been consistently participating within, uh, uh, city council meetings, I think attending others. Um, I don't know that you are employed with the city in any way. Okay. So, uh, I would nominate Rebecca Collins.
Did you, did you speak, did you speak last time on, I mean, you're welcome to speak again. I'm not gonna stop you from speaking, but, um,
My nomination from this commission, I do not want to say why in public, but I will provide you with my reasoning and, um, so I am withdrawing my, my appointment.
Great, thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, appoint Ted Hales.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on the item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Um, all right, do we have any other spots available?
One more.
One more. All right, and do we have any more people to appoint?
Donald Shang.
All right, Do, and Donald, are you here on Zoom? No Donald?
No Donald.
Yeah, I think we're
I make a motion that we appoint Donald Shang to the Public Safety Commission.
Second.
Uh, we have a first and a second.
Um, have we, has he been here for any of the appointments or questions?
He is not, he's not appeared before us. So that's my only concern is because we did set the criteria that people needed to come before us in order to be appointed.
Correct. Okay.
And, okay, can I just, how many do we have on the Public Safety Commission?
They have three now, so they can form a quorum.
We do, okay.
We do. We do have a quorum. Um, any other comments from council on?
Did, did we have a second? Oh, okay, thank you, sorry.
So we are not, uh, so we have a first and a second for Donald, but I think we, we did not vote. So I think do we need to have discussion or just go ahead and vote on it?
And I, I would like to vote.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on it. Okay, all those in favor of appointing Donald, he has not appeared before us, just so we're aware. Um, all those in favor of appointing Donald to the Public Safety Commission, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The motion doesn't pass, we do have a quorum. All right, let's go ahead and move.
I'm still in favor of appointing people to commissions if they're not gonna show up. There's no point in appointing somebody who won't show up.
Okay. No.
It did not pass. I apologize. Thank you.
Parks and Rec, one seat.
So we have Parks and Rec. We have one seat available. Has that, that person is being reappointed. Is that correct, Mandy?
Yes.
Okay.
And are they present today?
Are they present?
Zoom?
I do not know.
I motion that we appoint James Brown.
Second.
Parks Rec Commission. He's been on the commission for every week. Go back and see many minutes of his, uh, presentations and all. Let's just
I, I can speak for James that I was, I was liaison to that commission for two years. Um, he missed very competently. And he's very participatory and very involved, so I would support his appointment.
All right, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, uh, he's appointed, reappointed, excuse me. All right, and so just to confirm, we, the other positions are still on the full down, is that correct? For appointment?
Are on the what?
Are on, are, we cannot appoint the other members, is that correct?
You can. It's been noticed, these are
No, we can't. It has not been noticed.
It's been noticed since December when the Matty Act goes out.
Vacancies were not noticed. The vacancies were not noticed.
Their commission terminations, they're expiring commissions.
They were not noticed as vacancies. Public was not aware that they were able to apply to those commissions because they were not noticed as vacancies.
So I have a clarification to, I need to ask. So when the notice, you can see the person, their name, you can see when they started and when they are done.
Yes.
That date is highlighted as far as their expiration date, and it's been posted and it's posted for the entire time. So does that, that does not serve as notice, is that correct?
In my opinion, it does not, especially when it's on the board right next to a poster that says there are vacancies on the commissions and it doesn't list those. That, I was in the post office last week and that Matty Act, which is up to date, was posted right next to a poster that says we have one commission opening on the public safety and one commission opening on Parks and Rec, but it didn't mention economic development. So it's very confusing. I mean, if somebody were to fully understand how everything works and they saw the Matty Act, they might assume that. But next to another poster that states there are no openings on that commission, I think the assumption the average Joe would make is that there are no openings and they would not apply for an opening that they, but didn't appear to be the case. So I'm, I'm definitely opposed to making those appointments tonight. We can make them at our very next meeting.
I'm in favor of making those appointments tonight.
Great, um.
I, I think currently we have, do we have a, um, we're talking economic development, correct, at this point? Okay, so we do have a quorum at this time with economic development?
I, I'm not sure.
I don't think so because I haven't, I, is Jake still on the commission? But it's been Kelly, Darcy, me, Cindy, and I think that's, is that everyone? So without Darcy and Jake not showing up at meetings, it would be Kelly and Cindy, which would not be enough for a quorum.
You know, to be honest, I think the city did in good faith post these, um, these positions. They're, they're publicly available. I think if someone is actively wanting to participate, they would seek it out ahead of time. I think the city really has done its due diligence in keeping those items posted all the time. Um, I'm in favor of reappointing these people, but if, if you, we have strong objectives.
I, I have a question for the attorney on that. Um, so we have, uh, there are other applicants, Ryan, that came in today. The manager's, uh, position is that because it's not included in the packet, they couldn't be considered. Um, in the application process, or, or the information that I find, at least in way of ordinance, there's nothing that's restricting them from being considered on that. So I'm hoping that you could guide us, um, on whether any applicants could be considered or only those who submitted before. Thank you.
Wi, without a firm date for receipt of applications, you can consider applications on a rolling period as they come before you. Um, and so if you don't fill it with the appointments that are before you, you'll have additional applicants that you can consider at a future meeting.
Um, but conversely, applicants that came in since Friday, can they be considered today?
Yes, the agenda item is appointing somebody to the commission. Um, that agenda item was posted seventy-two hours before. It's not, the agenda item is not limited by the applicants. Um, and so those would be, um, cons, those could be considered. They're not in your packet, so you don't have the information. Um, and so, you know, if you And so, you know, if you wanted to consider those, then you could either review the applications now, tonight, um, or review them at a future meeting.
Can we interview Roxanne and Darcy?
Roxanne, go ahead. I see you up there on Zoom.
I'm here, my conjecture is unstable. If it drops out again during this, I'll run over.
Okay. Go ahead.
Me? Are there any questions?
Yeah, Roxanne, just, um, I haven't met you before. If you could just kind of give us your background, I know that you filled out an application, you've been serving in the committee or the commission, excuse me, um, but if you could just.
Um, so I, I am employed by REDEC, Redwood Region Economic Development Commission as a lender, and my background is in finance and lending. I've, let's see, I, um, and I live in Blue Lake and I love Blue Lake and I am really excited about all the engagement we've had. This is really exciting to see. Um, it's a little overwhelming, but, um, yep, I have two kids and a dog and some chickens and a cat. Um, I don't, are there questions or?
About the Economic Development Commission?
Um, I like that everybody gets a chance to, to have a say. I mean, I feel like we're very, we're inclusive at meetings and we get, we've had a lot more participation recently and it, um, it keeps us on our toes and it also, it, it helps us about what we're doing. Um, we've, uh, we're kind of, we've kind of emerged from the pandemic into whatever's next and we are seeing some more businesses in Blue Lake starting to prosper. I like knowing or hearing about the ideas for the community and what people would like to see and, um, how like long-term big projects come together over time, even though it can be frustratingly slow for some people who like things to happen quickly. I mean, things, the progress is made, it's just made on a bigger scale. It takes a while to do things right.
Roxanne, any other questions for Roxanne? Hearing none.
So can we also, um, then have the other applicant's information that we can consider before we move this to a vote?
I don't have any of that information printed, um, because it came in late today, so I was not prepared to bring that forward. We've never done that before, so.
Yeah, seems to be last. We have two candidates that are going to go here.
Can, can we get a, um, maybe some feedback as one of the current members of this commission is typically absent from those meetings? Um, has that person, um, met the requirement to be removed from that commission? Do we actually maybe have three seats that could be appointed?
Not noticed.
I don't know.
She's asking Roxanne, I think.
Roxanne, can you give me any, any feedback on that question?
I don't think we've set a firm precedent or have a rule for that, but I, I think it's something that is, could be agendized and discussed at the Economic Development Commission about, you know, how many meetings consecutively you miss, either excused, unexcused, before you are invited to resign your proposition.
Do we, is that, do you have that information, Ken?
Yeah, I believe we have some here, I'm looking for now.
Each, each one of, um, each one of the commission, um, related ordinances has a removal clause and I don't know what that is for the economic development off the top of my head.
I don't know that's necessary to tonight, um, because we only have two that had been, that we have posted and noticed, is that correct?
Right. Well, I'm, I'm going to stick with my position and I'm, I think we need to leave the field open for any, any other comers. Can we interview Darcy?
Sure.
Thank you. I think I saw Darcy.
Paging Darcy Lila.
She's not here, it looks like.
Oh, okay.
Um, do we want to go ahead and potentially table this item?
Yeah.
And then.
Yes, table, move on.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you, Roxanne, appreciate it. Um, just as you guys, and I'm not going to make the motion, but if you guys want to table and bring it back at a future meeting.
Yes, I'd, I'd make a motion at this point that we go ahead and table this, um, clarify our information, number of candidates in our postings, um, and then be ready for appointment.
And I would second that and that we bring it back to our very next meeting.
Please, yeah.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor of bringing this item back to the fut, next, uh, meeting?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? So four to one, fire dissenting. Thank you. All right, sorry, guys, we want to get to the other stuff.
Yeah.
We are on the battery storage, um, discussion. City Manager Mager, do you want to go ahead and?
Oh, well, there, that's hand.
Okay.
City Manager Mager, do you want to go ahead and begin the discussion on this or?
Go ahead and defer this to Ryan.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thanks. So at the special meeting last week, staff gave a report on where the negotiations stand with power transitions. We presented the, um, structure of the deal, um, the hybrid concept of a option agreement to sell two acres and potentially, um, if the council agrees in the future, an option to lease an additional four acres. Um, we covered the overall structure, we covered the purchase price. And at the end of the presentation, I asked the council for direction on two things. One was, is the council interested in the hybrid concept? Um, and there seemed to be, um, support for that. Then the second question was tabled to tonight, which is, um, is the council interested in staff pursuing transactional documents that you could approve in the month of March? Um, not approving it tonight, of course, but is that the road that you'd like staff to travel so that we can bring you, um, transactional documents for you to review in the month of March? Or alternatively, um, did you want to wait until the September PG&E application window? And I noted, um, you know, the benefit of approving it in March was demolition potentially happened sooner. The demolition costs that, um, have been obtained to date are still, uh, valid. And if we waited until September, demolition would be pushed back. Um, and we also, you know, uh, time elapsed and I, I don't know, uh, what the appetite of the other party would be, um, in September. So that was where we wanted some council feedback as to what your direction was, um, that was tabled to tonight so that the town hall and the battery, uh, tour could happen. And so staff is still looking for that direction from the council so that we know how you would like us to proceed. And, uh, either proceeding to bring something back in March, um, or tabling this into, until potentially September. So I'll stop there and open it up.
Great. All right, council, go ahead and begin discussion. What do we prefer?
To clarify, Ryan, um, I know when we had first gone over this new hybrid, which is, I think, um, really trying to accommodate many of the concerns that have been expressed. We talked about a number of ways in which, um, even if we began this process, there are many other off-ramps, as we would say.
I'll speak up. Sorry. The new hybrid version, um, had, was, was recon, that this was brought forward because many concerns from the community were heard. The size, the scope, the amount of obligation, and, um, this wasn't, the council working on this, but, uh, staff and city attorney who are appointed to move these forward, uh, worked with power transitions and brought back something that is very different in scale. And, uh, this is where I'm asking, Ryan, if you could kind of educate me again, uh, and, and make all of us aware in a quiet room, what are some of the off-ramps? And I guess first question, if we say yes, do March, what are we committing to? And if we, um, and if we do move forward in March, what are opportunities where the city will say this does not fit for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
So all we're looking for is direction tonight, you're not committing to anything. Basically, you're telling staff, spend a time effort to bring us transactional documents that we can begin reviewing, um, for potential approval in March. Nothing is approved until you approve the actual transactional documents, which will happen in the future. I went over last time, um, off-ramps that if we approve the option agreement, the city has, um, to avoid tying up the property for the two-year option period. And these are mutually acceptable off-ramps. Um, the first is if there's no RCEA offtake agreement, if there's no buyer for the power, there's, um, the project is not viable. So that's off-ramp number one. And that happens sooner rather than later, if not this spring, than early this summer. Um, the second is if the initial study back from PG&E, um, shows that the project's not viable. That would be another off-ramp. The second is if we are unable, um, during the option term to negotiate a mutually agreeable demolition agreement that would set forth the terms and conditions under which power transitions would demo the above-ground, non-concrete structures on the entire site. Um, if we can't come to agreement on that, as that being the primary consideration that the city is getting in return for selling the two acres, um, the city could terminate the agreement. Um, and then the last one that I, uh, talked about is the city's, as an off-ramp, to terminating the option agreement would be if the demolition does not, uh, is not performed in accordance with the demolition agreement, primarily the timeframe for the demolition and achieving substantial compli, uh, completion, uh, with respect to the demolition. So those are the off-ramps that would allow the city to terminate the option agreement. The other thing is the regulatory approvals, which, um, this option agreement does not grant. And so during the option term, once power transitions has secured the option to acquire the property, they can begin the entitlement process, um, which is, um, the regulatory permits, permits that they would need from the city and the other agencies. Um, the city would be acting in its regulatory capacity with respect to that. Planning Commission review, city council review, um, conditions on the use permit that the city deemed appropriate. Sequo compliance, of course, would be part and parcel of that. Other permits that would be necessary, um, would be part and parcel of that. It is a condition, um, of power transitions' ability to exercise and purchase the property that all government approvals be issued first. The other conditions that I met, that I discussed, um, of course, sequo compliance, demolition, and there would be other terms and conditions in the purchase agree, or in the option agreement that power transitions would need to approve, which are standard, uh, conditions for an option agreement that would be included in the transactional documents, um, such as the accuracy of their reps and warranties, um, you know, performance under the option agreement, um, and other standard conditions in addition to the, the larger ones before they could actually close on the property. And those would all be contained within the, um, action transactional documents.
One, one follow-up question to that. If, um, if we were to move forward in March and we find that we get hung up, then does this kind of automatically revert to the September window?
Well, from a perspective, um, that would be the hope. If the council's still interested in the project, we would still need a willing buyer on the other side. And they could speak for themselves if, if that was to come and go. The exclusive right to negotiate extends beyond March. But they can terminate that at any time, um, if they're no longer interested in, in moving forward with the project. Of course, you know, the site control is a necessary component of the PG&E application. Site control is defined in the PG&E tariff as an option to purchase or an option to lease. So our option agreement would satisfy that. Site control is not a requirement for the RCEA procurement process. So power transitions could continue to go through with the RCEA and put off negotiations with us until they are selected as a finalist with RCEA. Um, and then we could pick up negotiations again with the eye towards meeting the PG&E September window. Of course, I'm speaking for them. They would need to, um, voluntarily make this decision because nothing bounds, binds them to continue negotiating with us if, if, if they don't meet their targeted, uh, window. But I think there's concern from power transitions as to, um, the continual rising costs um, of development and pushing this out to September, they'd have to get all new, um, you know, they'd have to run a new pro forma on the viability of the project, including the cost of demolition.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I could go on for days, but please let others. Well, it just seems to me that the city doesn't have any, um, the city's opportunity to, to get out of the, um, agreement if we go forward at this time seem pretty thin. Um, it looks like it all rests in the hands of power transitions. You know, number three, if we were unable to agree on a demolition agreement. But I would think that that, you know, that really still isn't much of a, much of an off-ramp for the city, so it seems to me that, um, going forward at this time really does, um, obligate us to what could potentially be a two-year commitment on our part. And I'm still not feeling comfortable with that. Maybe if we had been part of the conversation prior to last week, uh, we might have some slightly different feelings about that, but I, um, I still feel like it's, it's, uh, it's too much, too soon. I wasn't expecting this timeline to get, to get pushed up like it is. I thought we were going to have eight months of, uh, schools of negotiating, um, time to, to get to this place. And, um, and I did verify some process with RCEA today, just in terms of what they're asking for. And then nothing has changed since December nineteenth. Their, their requirements were published December nineteenth. And so it's not like something was suddenly discovered in the last two or three weeks that changed the, the game for anybody. So I, you know, still feeling like, yikes, you know, um, the rules have remained the same, the processes remain the same, and suddenly we're under the gun to speed things up and agree to something different. And, uh, I'm not comfortable with it.
Yeah, just to, just to a- address some of those things, I mean, with the off-ramp, the, the requirement that the city and power transitions mutually agree to a demolition agreement gives us total discretion. I mean, if we don't agree to a demolition agreement, we take the off-ramp and we terminate the agreement. They can't say this is the demolition agreement, agree to it. And so that's something that would be subject to further negotiation and it would come before the council as here's the demolition agreement. And we would negotiate back and forth, and if ultimately the city council doesn't say let's move forward with it, then that condition wouldn't be satisfied.
Could you, could you explain some of those terms that might appear in the demolition agreement that could, uh, be in consideration?
Yeah, the demolition agreement primarily is going to be the document that says power transitions, you are obligated to remove and dispose of the above-ground structures, non-concrete structures. It would be a license to enter the city property in order to remove it. Um, there would be a mechanism to approve the contractor obligation that they keep the city property free of liens, an obligation that they pay, um, for the demolition, um, the time for completion, insurance, indemnity, bonding, both material, um, and performance, labor, material and performance, um, insurance, indemnity, um, assumption of the environmental liabilities. And, you know, other standard terms and conditions that would be in such an agreement. You know, there'd be a provision for auditing the costs because the city's interest is ensuring that the actual costs are what they are, because that affects ultimately the credit towards the purchase price. Um, so all of those, all of those, um, would be in the demolition contract for the city's protection. Um, again, that's not something that we started negotiating because the first step is, um, the option agreement. Um, so if we can't come to terms on the demolition agreement, you know, by the August of twenty twenty-five. So if we can't come to terms on the demolition agreement, you know, by the August of 2025 is. Is really in my mind when the city could say, you know, we're not going to come to terms on the manner in which the demolition is going to occur. And so we're going to exercise our right to terminate. Again, that's, that's in the city's control. The RCA procurement process is separate from the PG&E procurement process. Originally, power transitions was pursuing an interconnect on the, and Jeff can speak to this better, the distribution side. Through California ISO, Cal ISO. It's a longer process. It's a. It's, it's a process that's has no level of certainty. It could take years. On the PG&E side, on the transmission side, they're pursuing an interconnect agreement directly with PG&E. And I showed from the tariff, the language on the two application windows, it's March and September. And that was a change from the original exclusive negotiating agreement that they made. And they asked us to come to council to see if March was doable, and that's what we did. So we're seeking your guidance on that.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council or questions? Before we open to the public, I want everyone to know this, this decision that's made tonight is not approving or disapproving this project. We're simply picking a timeline. Just wanted you to know that. We'll go ahead and open it up for public discussion now. Yes, go ahead, sir. Yes. What was that? Go ahead, sorry.
Hello, everybody. My name is Juniper Summers. I've been a restoration specialist for over the last decade, including various NEPA and SEQUA processes, environmental projects. From a perspective, a graduate student, Cal Poly Humboldt in environmental engineering and clean transition. So this topic is important to me. And I think the idea of having a power system for Blue Lake or Humboldt in general is a good idea. We all are aware of some of the issues that we have with PG&E in this state. I'm speaking specifically to the numerous wildfires they have caused. I won't go on on that. I do see issue with. The, the lack of a sufficient timeline for both public comment and scoping on a project of this scale and importance. You can see how many people have attended this council meeting tonight with significant interest in this issue. And I think to give everyone's voices, to allow everyone's voices to be heard, extending this timeline would be a good idea. Speaking personally, I see issue with the way, my, my limited awareness of the way this process has unfolded so far. From my limited understanding, I believe there was a company that, that reached out to the city of Blue Lake with this proposal. And I have a couple of questions, the first of which is, has the city Blue Lake entertained other? Options beside the one that is present, was presented tonight? Are there other? Companies or models that could be adopted that would meet the same goals as what is being proposed? That allows for more public input and allows for perhaps. A model where we don't see the potential of a situation like the battery fire that happened in the town of Mossland in California. Earlier this year. That was pretty catastrophic. Volatile organic compounds that are released in a battery fire are extremely toxic to public health. I think that is a concern with some of the people here tonight. I think these things need to be looked at in depth. A timeline of trying to move this forward by September, off-ramps or not, is not sufficient. I, I'm going to end it here. One suggestion. As a person that's worked in forestry, restoration forestry and prescribed fire for, for quite a while now. I've mostly lived in Orleans, Somms Bar, that side of the county. And I've recently moved down to this side of the county.
Juniper, you have thirty seconds.
I would suggest looking into microbiomass generation for a power station. That is a strong need in Humboldt County. And would meet the needs that this project is.
Thank you very much. Quick, quick question. How many people are going to be commenting tonight? Could we get a show of hands? Okay, great. Anyone from outside going to be commenting? Okay, great. I, I, I don't think that's enough that we need to limit the time to, to two minutes or anything like that. So let's go ahead and continue. Thank you.
My name is Roy Gomez. I live off West End Road. I think I'm, might be out of this sphere of influence, but I don't think it matters for this purpose. I attended the meeting on Sunday and. I tended with an open mind, trying to gain more knowledge about, you know, the person proposing and the company that's proposing. This situation and what really concerned me more about this situation with the fires and the potential for fires and what happened in Moss Landing and. I attended with my eight-year-old daughter who had a lot of questions. She's really, really inquisitive and. Likes to know, of course, if we're going somewhere, what's going on. So I let her know and she was definitely interested and, you know, sat through the meeting and. Drew and paid attention. And one of the questions I asked was, you know, what, what's the worst-case scenario here and what's the potential for a fire? And I was answered by Mr. Goldstein. Is that your name? And you said that there was, you know, that the, the likelihood of that was nonexistent, that, you know, that wouldn't happen. So, you know, I took that for your word and, you know, from that point, I had another gentleman next to me who mentioned that. You know, that, that it just, that, that in this case scenario, because it's a iron lithium and not ion, that it would melt. In a sense, and so I took that as, you know, what, you're an expert, I'm not. And when we went home, of course, my daughter asked me, you know, what I thought about it and I asked her what she thought about it because I. I know that she's very intuitive and, and she says, well, it sounds like there's not going to be any problems with fire and we'll be okay, right? I was like, yeah, that's what I was told and what we were told. And after doing the research, I'm going to have to go back and inform her that that was not true. There has been lots of fires in California and China and Australia. The worst one being in China where people have died, people have been injured, and who knows what the long-term effects are going to be. So I'm going to have to go back to my daughter and let her know that that was a lie. And I know that she's going to ask me, why, why would he lie? And I have to be simple with her. Obviously, she's eight years old and I'm going to have to let her know. Because that gentleman doesn't have our community in his best interests.
Roy, you have thirty seconds.
He has his pocketbook in his best interests.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I have a major advantage to some people here because I started getting involved in this probably two and a half or three months ago and. I have some questions. One first question is regarding the cost for our attorney to draw up the agreement that he would be bringing to you for your approval. Timeline, how long it would take to draw that up. At this time, I would not recommend making a decision tonight. I think maybe schedule something for maybe around the ninth of March, which seems to meet timelines. And the reason being is because. We haven't got back the information that we're hoping to get from them regarding the appraised value as far as what the total appraisal will be. And I really can't look at the project. As far as financial viability, if it's viable at all or anything, we get those numbers. So we need, and that's supposed to happen later this week, hopefully is what I understand. So I would personally say that that and giving us more information, unfortunately, this, the new deal. I don't know where, it wasn't in the package. I can't find it on the website. So we have, we've changed the whole deal is my understanding. There's no longer, if I understand it, a, a right to get the additional six acres. You know, that there's, that's not an option of this anymore. I, I'd love to, I'd love to see the potential agreement. That should have been on the website. It should have been in the package. Maybe you guys have it, but we don't. And if you want us to participate and make informed decisions and give you our opinions, we have to have full access to the information. And so I strongly suggest that you did not make a decision tonight, but give all of us some time to see that packet, to see what it is. To get the appraisal and, and then to address some more questions we have. There's no gigantic hurry to make this tonight, one way or another. And a lot of people like to just say, no, I'm not in the position. I'd like to say no until I get more information. I did do understand the islanding, which is an important factor for us in many ways. But of course, we, we have, we have, we have a major problem down there to deal with. And we're going to need to come up with at least a half million dollars somehow. So I don't know, I'm personally able to, but I'm not going to donate a half million dollars to remediate that. Some other people who've just moved here, actually, a lot of people come from down south and they're living here and they sold their houses for a million dollars or two million dollars. And they spent seven hundred thousand. So they have the money they could donate should they feel unnecessary instead of that.
Thirty seconds.
Point that out. But we do have to have access to money to take care of the problem. And I toured the site today. I don't know how many of you have. But there are toxic problems there. We, I have to weigh whether the toxic problems there are equal to or worse about the potential toxic problems of what we're putting in. So, so we need, I need more information and until we get that, I highly recommend that you go ahead and. Consider a special meeting or something a little bit later, probably around March 9th. And again, the question is how long did it take to draft the document and, and, and how much does it cost us? Because right now you'd have to come up with the money to start with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Robinson. I'm a local plumber. You probably know me. Also, like Juniper, I went to, it was Humboldt State University at that time and studied engineering. I believe we really do need to clean up that site. I saw some really nasty water coming out of there when there was some serious rains. I also believe that global warming is real. And that battery storage is the best available way that we now have. For stor- storing solar energy that's collected during the day. I remember at least a year ago when Mayor Adeline Jones was speaking of this idea of getting. Battery storage there at that location. And I thought it was a great idea then. I don't know how long this has been under discussion, but I think it's a great idea in theory. I, I do have concerns that there does need to be off-ramps. It's sounding like there's off-ramps with respect to the cleanup. And there's also the SEQUA process. So if SEQUA is a wrecking ball. That's a problem. But if we can actually have a say in the SEQUA process where the council is continually looking at the impacts. And weighs in on the SEQUA process, I feel that if we do have problems with fire hazard. In the scoping process, that we, we do have another opportunity to say no. And I feel like this is, this is solving a couple of problems and it's worth looking into. And I feel like this would be a good opportunity to keep going. Now, I am concerned. Jeff was mentioning that something to do with RCA and the viability of this project, that it. Likely would not happen if we postponed it till September. I don't understand that. I'm concerned about that because. Obviously, the community is very concerned about a lot of aspects of this project. But maybe. We can at least get the ball rolling and recognize that there's off-ramps or ensure that there is off-ramps. Okay, I'm going to surrender my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I said most of what I had to say Sunday, and I think most of the people that are here were there. My background is that I've got an accounting degree from Humboldt State University and I've got fifteen years of development form of work in. In our local area with one of the largest developers we have here. So I'm familiar with the process you're talking about with. Working out the agreement as far as, as that part of it goes, but. So one of the, one of the things I noticed and I'm not sure exactly where on the documents I looked. At on Sunday afternoon, there was a discussion of a $600,000 purchase price offset by half a million dollars worth of. Renovation or reclamation or whatever you want to call it. And, and a audited cost. Analysis of the cost of, of remediation. What that tells me is that if it, if it costs more than a half a million dollars to clean up that site. The $600,000 won't cover it. And if that's the case, then the city would be on the hook for the balance of the, of the cleanup besides. Having given the $600, $600,000 in property. So that's a concern for me and I look and just look through that. And I'm not sure what's going to be the final agreement because everything's constantly changing. And you can't, you can't pin it down on what, what the agreement was. Is it six acres? Is it two acres? Is it two acres with four to go later or what? And what my concern is, is one of the assets of the project is being able to hook up PG&E. And if that's goes in the first, the first segment of this in the two, two acre parcel and we end up having to pay to clean this up on top of that. It doesn't seem to me like we're giving away a pretty big asset for. Opportunity to pay for our own cleanup. The other thing that I would like to say is that I went down. I guess it was maybe Saturday and, and looked at where. The city is in relationship to that site. And then on Sunday, I looked at what the weather pattern was for Sunday. If you had a fire and toxic fumes from a fire down there. It blows, unless it's a north wind type of day, which we have where it's clear, but like on Sunday where it's a typical winter day. It blows directly across the center of our town. So that's something the way too, as far as that part of it goes. I mean, I think that. The potential of a toxic fire down there would just devastate the whole town.
Thank you very much. Staff. Staff, you want to, do you guys want to clarify the? We are absolutely going to hear from everyone, yes. I just want to go ahead and, staff, you want to clarify the agreement on the purchase of the land and what happens when the cleanup exceeds the value of the land?
Yeah, so. If the demolition is less than the appraised value, they owe us the difference. If the demolition exceeds the appraised value, they have to still pay for it. And they will take care of the cost over and above the appraised value. As it stands now, it actually requires them to pay a hundred dollars still if the demolition costs exceed the appraised value. But they still are on hook for the full cost of the demolition irrespective of the appraised value. The city would not have to cover that cost.
Great, thank you. I'll, I want to go ahead and open it back up for public comment. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just going to say my piece as a young person here. I work in Blue Lake at Wild Rose Organic Farm, so I feel like I'm very much a part of the ecosystem here. Every day I see red-tailed hawks, I see deer, I've seen beavers on the Mad River. So I really care about the ecosystem of the Baduawat. It seems like one of the benefits of the battery storage being discussed is the demolition and removal of some of the existing infrastructure from the power plant. Though it would actually be repurposed. So I, part of me is asking, is it worth cleaning up a mess to risk making a potentially bigger mess? As it was said earlier by Public Works, Hetry Road is historic for flooding. To me, the plant should not be located near an environment. To me, the plant should not be located near an environmentally sensitive area. So I hear the need for renewable energy resources, but I do not want it by the river. In terms of timeline, it seems consistent that decisions with environmental risk are often pushed to having less and less time for deliberation. So I suggest we push back on that. And I also think global warming is real. And I also think putting our rivers at risk is a risk I am not willing to take. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comment? Thank you, Terry, for waiting. I apologize for interrupting you earlier. It's okay.
I guess my point when I was bringing this up about the inconsistencies that were, thank you, brought up at Sunday's meeting and that they don't fall in line with what would be an emergency response guide from a company that sells these big battery systems. And it's mandatory for them to make this available to emergency responders. And there was really clear inconsistencies and not the truth. And we're looking for a company that can, if, if everybody agrees that this is a good idea, I don't think it is right by the river. That's my opinion. But to have a company that would come in here and know exactly what they were talking about and being clear and being consistent is very, very important because the safety of this depends on somebody knowing what they're doing, being able to address issues. And I just also think that our river is so important. And, you know, according to the Army Corps of Engineers, and I have the reports, I read them, that levy has been breached two to three times. One, I just found the report today. And there doesn't seem to be a lot of discussion about that. And the fact that our levy is not certified. And that means it has problems that need to be taken care of. And I think that's the first place we need to start on this is to make sure that that is safe if we're putting housing, if we're considering everything else in that area. Because we have consistently had floods and different things happen here. And we have to address that because even that emergency response guide says that you cannot get these wet. And to do so can cause a thermal runaway. It says it in the document. So that isn't something that was covered by them. And I would have great concerns about the environmental impact. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Lori, go ahead in the back. Come up though, sorry.
My name's Lori Ponte. A big part of this discussion is talking about renewables, solar, wind. We're not going to be using renewables. The energy is coming from a PG&E line. It's coming in, it's going out. So we're not really doing anything green with this project at this point. So I, I just want to make sure that it's heard, that this is not a green project. And Mr. Goldstein, you know, you and I, I asked you that question earlier at a meeting and, and it's, it's clear. This is not, it's, it's not solar. We're not doing anything green. If it were, that would be awesome. And I don't think there would be so many people as concerned, but, but we're not using renewables. We're not saving anything. We're just pulling energy in from PG&E and putting it back out to the grid. And maybe Blue Lake will get four hours. I mean, how many of us have lost power for days? And not, not everybody has generator, but most of us can survive without a day or two of power. It's not pleasant. But, you know, it's not something that we would be totally uncomfortable without having power for a day or two. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jamie Bolton, a resident of Blue Lake. It's my understanding that the majority of the water that serves Humboldt County comes from the Mad River. And if, I don't know if the county of Humboldt has been brought in on this conversation, like the whole county? Because I, I, I don't personally think that Blue Lake has the right to make a decision about what happens to the water for the rest of the county without talking to them about it first. I have serious concerns about pollution, about all of the risks and the sense, just the sensitive area. The animals, just, it's so beautiful here. Why will we risk? You know, I, I don't know of other options have been like grants or other options been searched out for the, for assistance in cleaning up the old plant? I, but it seems really fishy to me that some Texas-based organization or corporation came in here. And, you know, is ma- putting it on a platter, making it look really great, but has been caught lying about important information? And.
It's three minutes. Sorry. It's your three minutes.
Oh, is it done?
Yeah. It goes really fast.
It wasn't.
I had mine going.
It wa- it was, it was not. Sorry, Mandy. It was, I don't, I don't, I think I have two minutes left on my timer. Thank, thank you. Sorry. Uh, go, go ahead. Continue. You have a minute and a half.
Thanks. I have a, I have a daughter that still lives in this county. I also have a daughter who lives in Monterey. And I just have ser- I have a father, an elderly father who lives in Arcata, a sister and brother-in-law who live in Arcata. I live here. I've lived in Humboldt County my whole life. And I, I don't want some corporate agency getting a hold of us. We don't deserve that. And, yeah, it's like, it's, it's corporate greed. And I don't, I don't agree with it. And I think the majority of the people in this room don't agree with it. And so I'm hoping that you vote no. I'm hoping for everybody who lives here's sake that you vote no. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments?
I just would like to, I just thank all of you for showing up Sunday and showing up tonight and giving your opinions. And, you know, everybody bring things to the table. I'm sure people here think this is a really good project. So speak up. You know, speak up why you think that. Speak up why you don't think it is. I, we now have 172 people that have signed our petition online against this project. And we will continue to make our petition for people to sign that aren't comfortable signing it online. But if you would like to sign the petition against this project, you're welcome. I welcome all of you that feel this is a good project to, you know, speak up why you think it's a good project. Speak up why you don't think it's a good project. This is dialogue. You know, this is the time for the city to quit fighting each other and come together and discuss. This is one of the most important issues that this city is ever going to face. It, it's our safety. It's our livelihood. We need to get that site cleaned up one way or the other. That power plant has got to come down. It is dangerous, but to say dangerous, dangerous, dangerous and put that kind of fear is uncalled for. I mean, let's have some realistic dialogue. What does it really cost to take down that power plant? What options do we have to get it taken down? What are the real toxic remediation that needs to be done out there on that site? It just seems to be skipped around and we don't ever get not, I won't say not the truth, but we don't get exactly what's happening out there. It's been sitting out there like this now for how long? Since we closed Ultra Power down. You know, Mandy told me there were three companies that were willing to take that site down. That's what you told me that day. You know, so, I mean, is there a bond that the city would be willing to bond to help remediate what's out there? A parcel tax? I mean, there must be other ways. And I think we really need to have some positive conversation about the dangers of this, how the plant and the possible dangers of putting battery storage down there on that river. You know, the river, the levy is compromised. It could not be certified by the state. The city was supposed to remediate and do some maintenance on that levy and it has not been done. So like my sister said, the bottom line is we need to get that levy back in shape. Because if it floods, it is going to break through and it is going to come into this town. So in 1997, it was three feet from the top of that levy. And if it had rained through the night, it would have come through that levy.
Please go ahead and finish up. Apologies. Thank you so much. Yes, go ahead. It's all right.
So I've lived at Blue Lake 78 years. And this reminds me of when they wanted to put the tire burning thing red on. You remember that, don't you? You remember that. And 69 years ago, my grandfather was head of the Army Corps of Engineers that put the levy in. And I don't want this battery factory here. I heard they start burning. You can't get them out. That's just what I've heard. And I love Blue Lake. As you know, I've been here all this time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Yes, go ahead. She's already come out and then I'll get you next. I did point at you though. I apologize. All right, you're up.
Well, I, I remember a meeting a few months ago when, when I walked outside after the meeting, there was a man who had wanted to clean out the, the mess that's there. And he wasn't considered. And he said he would not have charged us a single penny because he could make money from all the materials that are there. And he was, so he would have done it for free and he wasn't considered. So I think that what's going on for us pressure-wise is the state saying that we have to clean it up and there's a deadline on it. We have people who are willing to do that. And we need to follow through and we do not need to have such a horrible, dangerous thing in order to get it cleaned out. So that's the one thing that I wanted to say. And then the other is as far as water goes and flooding in an area, you know, last, a year ago, we were out there putting down sandbags everywhere. And there were places we couldn't drive. And it, they say, oh, well, we can come in and bring our big trucks and lift everything up and get it out. That's not true. It's all flooded. And they can't, it's all, they have it all bolted down on concrete. So they're just going to pick it up, put it on big trucks. Where are the big trucks coming from? You know, it's just, it's ridiculous and it's terrible waste. And we have other options. And we can have a really clean, beautiful place and we can build homes on it. You know, we can do good things with it.
Thank you very much.
My name is Lynn Glenn. I live in Blue Lake and have for almost 50 years. And I also remember the tire burning discussions that went on. I think the council has a lot of, has a challenge here because the city needs a lot of things that this project would do. For, it needs, you need to have a cleanup of the power plant. We need to have regular income, which is another issue that this would solve. Maybe a BES is the best solution for that. You know, we don't know, but we really, the only information on the safety, which is a big concern of the community at the BES is mostly come from power transitions. So, and I think definitely you should wait until September at the very minimum. You give yourselves time to maybe do your own research, maybe ask people to come in and talk to you from the outside, from other, other information sources about this type of plant. But the most important thing, if you do decide to go with a BES, is that the company that puts it in should be very trustworthy and highly experienced. And power transitions is neither of those things. I don't think that that's what we were finding out in the last week or two. They have, they've been in operation for two years. They've never done a BES plant. They may have people on staff that know about them, but companies can override professional decisions. Accountants can override decisions. I think you need to find a company that has experience doing this. Also, I have liked Jeff Goldstein and his presentation was good. And I thought we could rely on him. But then on Sunday, I heard him answer the concern about the fact that the two co-founders of Power Transitions used to work for Enron. And Enron was, had a lot of scandals and, and deceit. They, they had the largest bankruptcy in history. And, and he's mentioned particularly, so he said, his response was Sean T. Long, what did he say? This guy was in his 30s. He wasn't an officer of the company. He was an officer of the region in Africa. Okay. He had nothing to do with what happened in Enron. However, his, Sean's bio on the Rice School of Business said he was a former senior vice president and head of Enron International Business and Activities in Africa. And the court case was reported by the Cron on the trial, the Enron, one of Enron's trials was regarding the Nigerian barge deals, deal. And Sean T. Long headed Enron's African Investment Division in 1999 and admitted to engaging in wrongful conduct and assisting in the, in the takeout of Merrill Lynch. So he was actively involved in, in, and Ron actively involved in the deceit that went on. So after I heard that, I just became very concerned about everything that I was hearing from Power Transitions. So I think you, the importance of getting a company that's reliable, well, that's trustworthy and the, and the community can trust is really, really important. And I don't envy your decision. This is a hard decision, but please at least wait till September.
Thank you very much. Hi, thank you very much.
Hi, thank you. I'm Carlotta Clark and I've lived here since 1978. So I didn't do the math, but a long time and always at the end of Charton. So this facility would be very close proximity to my house and Lynn's also. And I just reiterate everything that everyone else has spoken against it and want to be on record that I adamantly oppose and think that it's preferable to not waste the time in even negotiating or thinking further into this project. There are so many other wonderful options. It is prime real estate that you are in the position to choose better options for our town and the county, as somebody mentioned. Thank you, Lynn, for bringing up the Enron affiliation because that was one of my big red flags in learning about this company. And I've been a, a part of the community long enough to remember that we've been all anxiously awaiting 2025. the community long enough to remember that we've been all anxiously awaiting two thousand twenty-five, when the lease was up. So that we could consider new wonderful things and I've always envisioned some other great things in that space. We already have a overtaxed fire department. The water to the whole county, I just have to reemphasize our health, my garden, my family and my friends and all of the community. Whether we all agree on the same things or not, I care about everyone's health here. And I think it is way more important than any company, corporation. As much as I know we need the money. There's things that are more important than money in this life. On that, just remembering that LLC stands for Limited Liability Corporation. And so they would not be held accountable, even if they say they would. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please vote no. No, they're all.
Anyone else in the public? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Janice Corcoran. I've been living in Blue Lake for thirteen years. I hope to one day say I can live as long as this lady has here. And I'd love it to be in a really pristine, beautiful environment. This is such a gem of a place for the whole United States. And I just am really concerned. People have pointed out that Mr. Goldstein has not been truthful about the problems, potential problems with fire. And everyone points out, we're right by the Mad River. We give, have the Mad River gives water to thousands of people in Humboldt. I have also talked to people who think we should do it. They wanna get rid of that eyesore. This company's gonna take care of it, you know, fix it up. But I don't think that this is a way. I agree that maybe that place, that site could be turned into something beautiful. They can also create revenue in other ways and keep nature protected, keep the fish protected. I love to swim in that river. Children swim in that river, dogs are there right next, right across the way. I also happen to be at a restaurant where I heard Mr. Goldstein the other day. And he seemed to be saying that all he needs is like one sign off and then he'll have free rein and no one could really stop him from doing anything. And so I really urge you to be careful and not start a snowball that you won't be able to stop. Yes. Sure, yeah, yeah, sure. That you had, that you had the permit in your vehicle and you were just waiting for one thing. And once that happened, you would have free rein and no one would stop you. And in, in Monterey, the soil samples that were taken after the fires that happened there for five days burning, they were hundreds to thousands times higher. The, sorry, the heavy metals in the soil were that much heavier. And, you know, I just think that because, I also didn't know about this until really recently. So I'm pretty shocked by the whole thing. And I just urge everyone to kind of take a step back and just make sure that we're making the right decision on this. And I understand it needs to get cleaned up, things need to happen, but this might not be the way. And if something does go wrong, he's not gonna be here, we are gonna be here. And that's all I have to say. Also.
Thank you.
Also, it's in a flood and tsunami zone.
Thank you very much.
Bad idea.
We're kind of nearing, sorry, I didn't know we were having this many comments, otherwise it would have limited us to a two-minute time. Do we have any more comments? If there's anything, I know, I've just checking out with you guys. Go ahead.
Anyways, Brian Kors, resident in Blue Lake, thirteen years, I've lived here my whole life. Let's see, my house was built eighteen ninety-nine, so it was built with, you know, untouched redwood from this valley, right, before we destroyed it. Anyways, so the power plant is ours, right? The interconnect, the power plant, the twenty acres, twenty-two acres. We, we own a power plant now, right? That's ours, right? Not yours. So we, if we sell it, we lose control of who's gonna clean it up. And that's like the control, like if my kids grow up and buy my house and they're living here. Right? It's future, hundred years from now, hundred fifty years from now. So just think ahead, right?
Thank you. Alright. Yes, go ahead.
My husband that has spoke, I just really feel like it's, it needs to be said that this is a false sense of urgency. And that false sense of urgency that's being created because somebody wants something from us is not our emergency. And it doesn't need to be rushed. And I understand that this has been in the talks for a while, but it hasn't been transparent to the community as a whole. And what I mean by that is it's not, I work, I work long hours. I think having a forum that maybe we could create that people are able to have access to the information easier. It's very hard to find information on the city website and as a whole. So that's my recommendation, is to just take a step back and take some time to really think about this. I work as a nurse and in scientific community, evidence-based research is really important. And something I have not said, I've, I've heard statements claiming that it's safer. And safer does not equal zero risk. And I would like to, I've been looking in databases, I have access to research on universities. It's part of graduate programs. And I have had a really difficult time finding evidence-based research that proves that this is safe. And that is my line of work, so that our community is safe. That's what I rely on before I treat our public. I use evidence-based to treat all of you that you come into the ICU. Okay, it's very important to me and I'm, I feel very passionate about this, that we look at this. You should be proving to us with research that this is safe. Not just a statement when this is new technology and a new company. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. If there's no additional comments that, not that anything is, means less than anything else. Go ahead, Alex.
I am very conflicted. I agree with everything that was said. Everything, both sides, both sides, okay? It's where the point of view, people see risks, where the people won't see any risks. I'm not here to talk about that. I'm not here to talk about the lake, but we do have a huge problem out there. The kids will get in there through any of the breaches in that fence. And one of them falls down one of those things, we're done as a city, forget it. What is it, what is it, the, the, our insurance pool? Sierra. One point five million or something? Liability on that? That's what we're facing, that's immediate. Those kids go where kids wanna go when mom and dad ain't around. We all know that. So that's our problem. Now, that's what got me first sympathetic to Mr. Goldstein in there. Okay, yeah, he wanted to clear that place up because it's a real risk to us. Okay, I understand the fears of the batteries. I'm not denying that, I don't want to argue that. But what I want to say to us, particularly the property owners in this room. Are you willing to have another one hundred, two hundred dollar assessment? You're marked on your property to go to clean that, that thing up? We can do that. The state of California will allow us to do that. But will you do that? Will you put your money where your mouth is? To clear that place up and make it safe for all our citizens without outside help? Cause that, cause you look to yourself, I was raised, you got a big problem, look to yourself to fix it. Don't be asking somebody else. So that's all I'm gonna say. That's all I'm gonna say. But unless you have a solution to that problem out there. Okay, you have to give Mr. Goldstein some credit for stepping forward saying, I will do that. I don't. I, I do not. I do not judge.
Point of order, bring it back.
I do not ju, let me, I do not judge anybody's motivation.
Hey, whoa, 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 let's bring it back to comment, hey, no, none of that, come on. Alex, are you done? Point of order, please. Thank you, Alex. Yes, go ahead.
You can.
One, one thing I would like to ask the city and is that I, I ride my bike on that levee. And I can't ride it anymore knowing those, those fences are open. A child is, could easily go down that and when there's no water in there and get in there. You guys, please repair that immediately. Yeah, the fencing that's around that, it's on the levee side, there's a big old gaping hole in it. And not only that, animals can get in there. You guys know this risk and you don't do that. It should, I mean, when I heard that, that is upset me. I mean, kids are down there walking that levee, dogs, people. It's, there are a lot of people down there all the time on it. So please, you know, make, take action on that, because I just didn't realize it was, that was so, that, I mean, I didn't, I have never heard what I've heard here. And I, I went all through Blue Lake School, I've been here a long time. So I think some good can come of this, we can repair the fence.
Thank you very much. Do you have a, are you commenting, Angela? Okay.
I was really unaware, kind of like you guys were, that this was gonna be happening. I have been coming to meetings for, I don't know, two and a half years. And never heard about this until maybe two months ago. So, so it does feel very pressured. I, I don't ever make a decision when I'm under pressure. You can't think clearly. Something that I noticed at the meeting on Sunday was the verbiage being used. And it's very inconsiderate to say that, that two acres is a postage stamp. You continue to misrepresent the space that this is gonna take up. I also want to say that the noise that will be coming from this, there was a video posted. It is incredibly noisy. I walk down there, I don't, I own two properties in Blue Lake. I don't want to hear that coming across our valley. I don't. I, I appreciate that the new council has been taking their time. Because I was at the last meeting where they were asked to make this decision. And there was so much pressure from Mandy and from the attorney. And from Chris Fire, actually, he just wanted to rubber stamp it. And I really appreciate the council listening to everyone, considering everything and absolutely doing their own research. The reason that we elected this new council was because the old one did not hear us. They were not listening. And so I hope when you guys consider all of our statements, all of our statements from Saturday, the, the petition that, that we got together and signed. We going door to door. Blue Lake is very passionate that this does not happen in this way. Of course, I want to see that cleaned up. I think we need to repair the fence. Why haven't we repaired the fence?
Angela, your time's up. Go ahead and wrap up, sorry, your time's up.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
And the, the sixty-foot poles. I don't want to see sixty-foot poles down by the river.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment in the next ten minutes here, so nine-thirty. And take a quick break. I'm gonna go ahead and open up to Zoom. Do we have any comments on Zoom? If it's the same, if it's, if, if you want to reiterate what somebody else said, that's fine as well. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you, everybody in the room. I want to take a deep breath for everyone sitting there and any chair or any floor or outside the doors. This is a major deja vu from back in twenty-one COVID, Danco days in the same location fear, fear. I really want to advise our council, we worked so hard for so long to get the majority of you there that I know back in the past, Brown's Act was never really adhered to. And I do feel tonight, I would advise my council that please be aware, there are a lot of situations evolving this evening that could put you guys at liability and we've worked too hard to get you there. I do advise that you make a motion before we go to public comment. That's the most, unless you make a motion later, then you should open public comment again. So we want to speed things up, get your dialogue in, make your motion and let the public speak. I advise you to make a motion to postpone this at any delegation that you feel is appropriate in the way that this was an inappropriate meeting for the public attendance. I do not want you guys to get in trouble. No prior counsel that was thrown under the bus, got in trouble for this stuff in the past. But you guys are now a target and I do not want to lose you. You guys are being very vulnerable right now and I want the rest of the public to understand. These guys are getting thrown under the bus, you guys, I've been a part of this for a long time. And this is definitely a situation that we should have a lot of respect for the people sitting there right now. Some of them, but in the regards that we are being kind of pressured once again. And I just advise you guys, err on the side of caution. Make the best decision tonight to exclude anything that would temper your positions where you are right now. And then we'll move on with this situation. Let's first protect you guys is where I'm at. I'm worried about that with the situation, thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, go ahead, iPhone?
Thank you. My name is Anthony and I worked in Blue Lake for a little over a decade at the Wild Rose Farm. I'm always looking for housing opportunities there and I live in Arcata downstream. I drink from the pump, just like many other Humboldt County residents. And I wanted to say that while the interest in being in an existing site connected to the grid for power transitions might be why they're inquiring. It doesn't seem wise to use old infrastructure that might have degradation. And I agree that we should not be risking our natural resources or the health of our environment and the people who live here and that it's offensive even that they would want to, that anyone would want a B E S S facility in that location for those reasons. But I also have a question is, I did some research into lithium iron phosphate and understand that the BMS, which I'm assuming is Battery Management Systems, they fail. It's a question of when, not if. So what is the formal plan for when the BMS fails? Is one thing I wanted to bring up. And then really, it's just great to see so many people making so many great points. As far as representative democracy goes, it seems unanimous. And I hope that you guys will make the right decision to send Power Transitions packing. And, you know, without their B E S S plant, I think that the responsible decision is to recognize the value that the city of Blue Lake has in that location to send someone out there to give you an estimate on what it would cost to clean up. There's several great local companies that could help you with that. And it would be good to see what they would charge before giving someone else the rein to do what they And it would be good to see what they would charge before giving someone else the rein to do what they will. And then also um, just thank you for taking the time to hear everybody. You know, this is uh, representative democracy and it's really important that the public's voice gets heard. So um, thank you, everybody for showing up. That's all I can say right now.
Much, um. Sorry, I apologize. I can't see your name. There's too many characters in it. Can you? DeeDee, go ahead and um. Go ahead. Uh, Linda Cooley, go ahead.
Sorry.
Oh, DeeDee, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. I agree with many of the statements here. Um, I came to that uh, town hall meeting adamantly opposed. I took in everything that we learned. Uh, I took in what was the obvious dishonesty of the presenters. Um, you know, I took in the condescension with which they approached us. But the thing that concerned me the very most, it's two things. First of all, I'm very concerned that we not sell two acres of Blue Lake property to a limited liability corporation of essentially modern day oilmen. Because when they all own that property, you know, they might ditch the whole project. But then we have no real control over what's done with that property. We have no control who they might sell it to in the future. Um, you know, we have no, very little control over what might occur there. Um, you know, these are Texas folks that are about making money on energy. And a bunch of red flags have gone up for me because actually I've become less opposed to the concept. But all the red flags and bells and whistles go off for me when you have out of state people whose primary interest is making money, okay? Saying, hey, we really want that property. Here's the, all the stuff we can put into it for you. Really? Like, I think in a normal world, we get second opinions, third opinions, fourth opinions. Um, I think we have many local developers or at least state the people that might be interested in this project of cleanup for reciprocation. And I really would like to please ask you to reconsider even selling this to that company out of Texas who has leaders that are poor examples of ethics. Um, because honestly, they just want to make their money and they don't give a shit about us. I mean, pardon my language. They just don't care. And that was pretty obvious in the way they talked. And I was sitting pretty close to the front when someone said, what is your ideal location for something like this? And you know, the guy said, you know, we need to be near a grid, but then he said pretty quietly, so only some of us started in the front row in a metropolitan area. Yeah, that's where it belongs. It doesn't belong here in rural Humboldt. It's not green energy, as was pointed out. And you know, four days of, you know, islanded power really doesn't do much for us. And, and my last concern is this, I studied uh, the natural disaster hazards mitigation and risks of this area at Humboldt. Under Lori Dangler, world renowned experts on earthquakes and tsunamis. Nobody has brought up the hazards that are inherent in the Medesino triple junction. Because I think the biggest risk for us, yes, there is, there's obviously a potential for poisoning and I'm very concerned about that, both water and air. But let me just say, please take into consideration the earthquake hazards and contact the experts that we have living in this county before you decide you're down on this project.
Thank you. Um, we have two minutes left and we're going to close public session. Um. Do we have to announce that, Ryan, before we begin or like when? I, I thought we had five comments.
Yeah.
According to the audience.
I'd take a poll and see how many comments we have left before deciding.
We have four on Zoom right now, so that's.
I'd give them.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, Lynn, Linda, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My question and concern for council is oversight of this project. We just heard earlier that our city is having trouble tracking permits and licenses we currently have, which makes me really concerned. How are we going to track the licensing and permits on a project of this magnitude? We really don't have anyone qualified on our city staff to oversee some of this, so who would that be and how would the city pay for that? Um, I think all of our city employees are overwhelmed and overworked. We're not able to get reports done um, with all the meetings, so who would be overseeing that and how will we pay for it? I don't think that that person is currently employed by the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Emily, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a resident of Arcata. I have two children I'm raising here. And I drink from the pump station that will be um, ruined if anything happens to the site. I would like to bring to the council's attention what we have seen over the last decade in regards to the media and um, how they are controlled by the people who line their pockets. And this seems to be a similar situation where an outside entity comes into a community. And I mean, it's a little bit, it's different, but it's the same and, and has control over the community of, about, of the health of the community. And so I um, I would like to remind everybody of what happened in North Carolina and Virginia and also in East Palestine. Um, that site is absolutely not cleaned. Those people were not taken care of. Um, a lot of them are very, very sick still. And the railroad did not do what it was supposed to do. And I honestly don't think that these groups that come in and are in the guise of green energy, really going to take care of the citizens if anything actually happens. I agree with almost all of the comments that have been said. And I really hope that you bring this to the attention of the entire county and also not make any decisions anytime soon until the entire county has a say. And thank you and I appreciate you giving us three minutes. Have a good night.
Thank you, Emily. Ray, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Actually, this is Becky. Becky Thornton Regozzi here. Hey, I, I just want to say that um, I actually agree with um, all of the people that have been ahead of me. I just know that I, I don't want to see this next to our river. That is my biggest concern right there. It's next to the river. And the, and of course, second is who is doing this? LLC, reason? I've been in business twenty-five years. We've never become an LLC. There's a lot to that and I just don't feel that that is a good situation for Blue Lake. Because believe me, you're going to lose control. That's not what you want. So please, think about what you're doing. Think about what's happening here. Uh, to me, it's just, you know, just not right. So be careful with what you're doing. But we thank you for all of the hard work that all of you are putting into this. So um, and all the consideration and we thank you for being up there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrew, go ahead. Andrew, are you there, my guy? All right, Andrew, um. Not seeing you come up. I'm not trying to cut you off, but. All right, well, uh, we're going to go ahead and um, bring it back to council. Um, I think we're going to take a quick break and, and come back for, for a little further discussion. Five minutes, yes. We'll come back in five minutes. Thank you.
I don't know.
That's what I'm worried about. This was hard to try to get it.
This is what happens with public comment. You're just got to sit there and take it.
Calling, calling an liar. I'll never.
Yeah, Ryan and I have had to do it. Why?
You know him?
Huh?
You know that? He was clearly. He did. Once. He didn't really help. It's like, I should die. This is John.
Hi.
Yeah.
You don't get so careless, but the technology is personal.
I know.
What's the word? Uh, accusation that he's taking so much.
And you're.
I heard it was like.
So we're going to.
Reconvene? Hey, Andrew, we're going to, we're actually going to open up public session again and you're going to come back. Are you ready for your three minutes? Uh, actually, I just need to go ahead and reconvene. We're going to go ahead and just reconvene here. Andrew, go ahead.
So I, I just want, yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me? I unmuted myself before uh, I was muted by the whoever was, you know, doing their thing and now y'all can hear me, right? Great. Yes. Okay, so thank you for providing this opportunity for public comment. Um, I will address the nature of that comment later, but I wanted to make sure that within the timeframe that I'm provided, that I provide both the council and the public with the following information. You may have all heard about or, or maybe even lived through the Moss Landing fires. It was a horrific event. I was there. We don't know the extent of the damage that will result from the fallout of heavy metals from that fire. The company is uh, reticent to provide any information. And the government is even less worthwhile in providing such. But I will provide you with the following information, which is available online for anyone to look up. Duke Energy Moss Landing LLC. Quote, Vistra Energy Corporation filed a mitigated negative declaration with Monterey County. It can be found at Sequanet. That's the California Environmental Quality Act. At State Clearinghouse number two zero one nine zero one one zero six seven. And Monterey County planning at PLN one eight zero three nine four. Sometime later, they also filed State Clearinghouse number under Sequanet twenty twenty zero five zero three zero nine. And Monterey County PLN one nine zero two five three. These are all Vistra Energy Corporation Moss Landing LLC battery fire twenty twenty-five. I am about to read to you, I'm about to read to you the mitigated negative declaration, which says, with any battery energy storage system, there's a risk of fire resulting from overheating or electric defaulting conditions. To address this concern, we include passive physical electrical control features. A range of active fire protection features would be installed in the battery storage building in the unlikely event that the passive source. I encourage you all to look up this information on your own. I provided you with the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Andrew. All right, we'll go ahead and close public session again and bring it back to council for further discussion and decision. Who would like to make the first comment?
Right out of the gate, one quick question for Ryan, please. It was brought up something about appraisals perhaps coming in this week. Um, do you feel that that's any bearing on um, the decision tonight or tabling it or?
Yeah, you know, um, obviously the, the appraised value of the property is important. I, I think it's likely that the cost to remediate and bring the site down is going to exceed the appraised value um, to benefit to the city. Um, if it doesn't exceed the appraised value, then the city gets that difference. So, you know, I'm interested too, to see what the appraised value um, will be. We've looked at previous appraisals of the property, um, of nearby property on, um, I think it was on Taylor Way. Um, that in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand eighteen shows a value of about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars per acre. Um, we think that um, in the time that's passed since those appraisals, the value of the property has likely gone up, not down. Again, as I presented last week, the um, assumption that the appraiser is being tasked with is not the site in its current condition, but the site in its remediated condition. Um, and so I, you know, I, I, I feel confident that, you know, one, whatever the appraised value is, it's likely going to be less than the cost to demolish. And so there's a benefit to the city. Um, but if the demolition is less because the appraised value is high, that's a benefit to the city as well. Um, because there's that deficiency um, that power transitions will need to make up um, as part of the option agreement. I'm curious too.
Quick question, does the contract include soil contamination? I can't recall. Cleanup of soil contamination.
So the, no, um, the remediation for the phase one A is the above ground non-concrete structure. So essentially bringing the plant down and uh, disposing of those pieces that were brought down. Part of the, part of the overall project and the part that we're not getting to. Part of the, part of the overall project and the part that we're not getting to by agreeing by, by the option is the Sequo process, which comes next, and that is a public engagement process that the council controls. There'll be um, studies that'll be funded by power transitions through consultants. There will be public information that's provided on those special studies. Um, there'll be opportunity for comment and response, and then ultimately some type of environmental document will come to the council for its review after a pretty extensive public engagement portion. Um, you know, I, I think staff's perspective is we'd love to have that information now, but hiring those consultants and doing all that work is expensive. Um, when you couple it with a potential development project, the developer pays for those costs and the city controls the Sequo process. At some point, the environmental impacts, the safety, the operational controls will be studied. It'll be prepared into an initial study scoping document. It'll be released for public consumption, and that will be really the time where the council can consider those. The option agreement just facilitates investments into that process, so then we can get the benefit of that information. We also have the benefit of um, RCEA through their procurement process, doing their due diligence as to the companies that are applying for off-take agreements. They have far more resources at their disposal, and so they will be doing reverse due diligence on the companies that are proposing um, an off-take, um, and that'll be a public process as well. So yes, this option agreement is coming to you on an expedited basis. I acknowledged that last time. Um, but again, we're coming to you to see if that's something you have the appetite for. Um, and if not, um, you know, this is your project, and so, you know, we're looking for that direction to figure out how quickly you want us to move to get you in a position to potentially approve an option agreement that then sets the groundwork for addressing all of the comments about safety, operation, environmental. We just don't have, you know, the consultants at our disposal to be able to determine that. Now, we will um, through the, through the secret process in the future.
So just to confirm, like now is not the time we would bring up a safety, a potential safety issue. Is that correct?
Well, certainly they can be brought up, and I think it's, it's, it's good to know that those issues need to be addressed. I think staff has similar concerns that through the secret process, a lot of these concerns need to be worked out. Um, you need the information, but you need the information from engineers, um, you know, consultants who are experts in the field. Um, and, and that's what the secret process allows for. Sorry about that.
And I think it's also important to keep uh, in context, the length of time that will, we will proceed through to get to an end product. Um, this, this process is going to be a lengthy process. I mean, it probably would be two years before anything was ever built. Um, within that timeframe, there's a lot of changes right now happening with technology. Um, things are getting safer, things are getting smaller, they're getting more efficient. Um, so there's a lot that we'll learn through the process, um, looking at, you know, all the issues related to safety and those concerns and the environmentals and all those consultations that people have brought up that are concerns, that gets taken care of through that consultation process as well. Um, some of the outreach that we've been doing, you know, hearing questions and trying to get some answers for council. Um, for instance, we reached out to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, you know, to, I had a meeting with their general managers yesterday, and we sat down and talked about the project, and I asked them, you know, what are your concerns with the water? And um, I was actually really surprised to be informed that Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District operates their own best systems, and there's actually one at Essex. Um, and that is their backup battery system to make sure the turbidity reduction facility operates, and that's right next to the river in Essex. Um, so that was interesting to hear their perspective on these best systems and how they integrate into their safety plans and their operational plans. Uh, I talked with the Arcata uh, Fire Marshal and talked with Arcata Fire District's Fire Chief, um, because we're, they would be our mutual aid partners, you know, to ask about, you know, there's several of these best systems. I mean, these best systems are, are scattered throughout our local communities and our local region already. Um, we toured the microgrid on Saturday. That's a perfect example. Um, I know that there's one at Mad River Hospital. Um, Rebecca had actually told me that it's um, near her office. Um, so there's a mega pack right there. We have several of these mega packs at the Rancharia. Um, I know that there are several mega packs at Saint Joseph Hospital. Um, there are some at HSU, Cal Poly HSU. City of Eureka has several mega packs throughout. A lot of the wastewater treatment facilities have these systems as well. Um, so there's a lot of information out there. There are a lot of systems that we, you know, can learn from and we can see and we can, um, you know, ask questions of. So I think that's really positive, that this isn't a new technology by any means. Um, people have Tesla walls, you know, battery packs on, on their homes, and that was actually what the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief told me. They said, you know, we're not concerned about these best projects because they're contained, they're individual container units. They're nowhere near what Moss Landing was like. I mean, that, uh, just apples to zucchinis at that point. Um, but they said, you know, what we are concerned about is people having these systems on their houses, because when something goes wrong in that respect, that burns down the house. That can burn down the neighbor's house, and that's content. Uh, fires and a lot of toxins can be, you know, can be uh, released through that. I'm on the volunteer fire department, and we've gone to a lot of EV fires. Um, also just a lot of regular vehicle fires, and they burn hot and toxic in a long time, and they're really hard to put out. Um, but we also see millions of EV vehicles on the road. So, you know, as technology gets better, as safety features get better, you know, we learn more. Um, but I just want to reiterate that this is not a quick, it might be a quick timeline to start a process, but it's not a quick timeline to get to an end result. There's a lot of process and a lot of time and a lot of questions that get answered through that process. Um, and Sequa is there to protect, and it's a hard process to get through. It's very, um, as a, on the developer side, everyone hates Sequa, right? You know, on the other side, it's there for a, a really high level of protection, so.
I think there's one more concern and, and I'm.
Fine, where do you read? Hit the signs on it, boy. I'm already running a beat shot, not done. Ask him, maybe?
Point of order, thanks.
Mute him?
Um, sorry about that, everybody. Um, so I just want to bring up, and I apologize for doing this, there is a propane, a large propane tank there.
Mr. Mayor, I think you should advise that any further disruption is going to result in him being removed from the Zoom.
Andrew, any further disruptions and you'll be removed from the meeting. I, thank you.
What was your question?
Um, there, there is a large propane tank very close to where the potential battery site would be. That is a concern. Obviously, that would be addressed during the sequel process. Okay.
Yeah, and Ed Leyd Law is the local Fire Marshal. Um, and Ed is usually um, who everyone kind of uses locally to look at all the fire codes, all the NFPA requirements. Um, he would be evaluating the site, the project, the scope, any type of um, exterior exposures, all that gets taken into consideration as well, and he actually consulted on the propane tank. Um, so he's very familiar with that project.
Great. Any other questions from council? No questions? Do we, are we ready to entertain? Yeah, go ahead.
Right out of the gate, rap tax. I mean, benefits to this project to me are real significant, and I've got little data here. Y'all have to verify. Voting to take the next step today does not buy Blue Lake to any deal, but is necessary to gain more info and confirm this project's viability. Um, anything we could do to fast track the demolition of that dangerous eyesore over there is paramount to me. It always will be. Uh, I support the timeline for power transitions with direction from council to bring us transactional documents for March. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
A comment. Um, so I find myself through this process, um, imagining how this, this conversation might have gone if we started out the process by having town hall meetings to talk about what the potential for the power plant was. Um, I, um, I know that we have an MOU with RCEA, and that MOU is to, to investigate, talk about, collaborate on uh, the potential for battery storage on that site. And that MOU could have played out in a lot of different ways, where uh, we as a city were um, benefit from RCEA's um, professional and technical expertise um, in a lot of different ways, and as a city, we get to talk about uh, what we want, what our vision is, what risks we're willing to take, what the payout to us is going to be. Um, all these different things that we just don't know now, and maybe we're going to learn a lot of those things through this process. Um, maybe Sequa's going to teach us some stuff. Maybe Sequa is going to help mitigate some of the concerns we're worried about. Maybe a lot of things, and I get that there's a process that happens as the whole thing unrolls. Um, but I am stuck feeling like we're doing this backwards. Like we didn't decide that we wanted a battery storage project and then put our heads together to figure out how to get that accomplished. And um, and that's very concerning to me because there's the whole added issue of the pressure, um, you know, um, of the timeline and the, and do we really want to be here? Do we really want to go down this path? How do we get off this path if things start to look wrong to us? Can we really get out if we want to get out? And I know we have the legal um, assurances that there are ways, but it's so much harder to stop a process once it gets rolling than it is to just not start. And I, and I feel in some ways maybe it's not fair. We've already gotten this far, and, and is that fair? Is that the right thing to do to the parties involved? You know, maybe it isn't, but at the same time, what is our greater concern? Our greater concern is our city, um, our direction, um, and us being in charge of choosing that direction. Um, right now, we're not in charge. And I feel like it's our job to be in charge and to, and to, you know, to be courageous enough to say whether or not we really want to take that next step. I don't really want to take that next step. This feels wrong to me. And I think we've heard from a lot of people tonight, and it feels wrong to them too. So at the very least, I would vote that we do not accept um, an accelerated timeline that we, that we, you know, just fall back to the original exclusive negotiating agreement that we have and, and not entertain this, this accelerated timeline.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Um, I just want to say that I really appreciate, like, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, guys.
I really appreciate the active engagement with the citizens of Blue Lake. I know this is a tough, um, decision to be made. Obviously, we're sitting here uh, doing this, and we all know this, the, the state of the, the power plant site out there. We know that it has to be cleaned up. We know that it's very dangerous and toxic now. Uh, my concerns, I guess, with some of the engagement is that it has not had a balanced approach, and there's been some misinformation and some um, un- unfounded, but some, some misinterpretations, some misunderstandings of what the actual situation is, comparing the two different types of batteries, comparing the potential for safety issues with them. And in spite of um, hearing or attempting to hear, I was at the city, uh, I was at the town hall meeting. I was there. Um, it became very chaotic at times and challenging to really get a good grasp of actual concepts that were being explained. That is concerning to me. I feel that we do need some more time to be able to absorb and understand completely without having what I would consider fear mongering attempts at uh, changing uh, or at, at making decisions, and that includes things like the petition online with these inflammatory, literally inflammatory photos of worst-case scenario with these giant projects, which is not what we're talking about. And um, also um, the, the anonymous, what one of the email correspondents to me said, anonymous uh, propaganda left on their, on their uh, property uh, describing the worst-case scenario. Yeah. So I guess, you know, I do understand that this is a conflict. I have received some correspondence from uh, the citizens, and I have to say that there were some mixed feelings out there, some uh, people who wanted me to know that they had mixed feelings. They wanted to move forward, but they wanted to make sure that XYZ was in place. For example, some of, some of the, the concepts and um, understandings that we are going to have agreements with if we move forward with this. Um, five, six, actually, people were absolutely one hundred percent, no, not on your life would I ever want this ever, because did you hear about the Moss fire? Um, and then nine people were absolutely for this, had some other concerns about misinformation, disinformation being spread throughout the community, but they did want to uh, move forward with this project. So you can see that there is absolutely a mix in the community. I feel very strongly that we uh, need to have more dialogue, more discussion. We need to have some resources that are evidence-based. I'm absolutely for evidence-based information, one hundred percent. Um, resources listed, et cetera. And so I just wanted to say, I, I really do appreciate the involvement. I appreciate the engagement, but I do have concerns about the imbalance of the information that was delivered. Um, and, and without really um, diving deep into what does this really actually look like? And unfortunately, because of some trust issues, I fear that this is not going to be possible. So that's, that's my comment. Um, I'm just wanted to put that there.
Thank you very much. Any further comments?
Sure, thank you. Okay. Well, she just hit the, the very word uh, that I felt is in a way, the most important element in this, and that is trust. And so before getting back to trust, uh, I want to acknowledge uh, how wonderful it was tonight to hear this process of people speaking their uh, their hearts and their minds and concerns and doing so in, in a way that we could all listen and participate. Thank you for that. I want to thank um, our, our older generation who have been here, and I didn't know about the, uh, the tire burning plant, but you know, they kind of have seen it all, and they have a strong and keen awareness of what they might leave behind for our younger generations. And for our younger generations, I want to see more of you guys out here, because decisions we make today will affect you for some time, and we want to know your thoughts and concerns. So um, that's, this has just been hugely transformative for me to see how much engagement there's been in the community. Um, when I came in tonight, and I mean, I have been like a pendulum right around the minute, do we, don't we, do we, don't we, do we, don't we? And it is a matter of what perspective one would adopt. From my business experience, from my degree in industrial technology, from my research of my masters in engineering and technology management, um, and from having been a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, I am comfortable with this technology. And I do think it merits evidence-based research to come forward. Um, in comparing the apples to zucchinis, let's separate those out and make sure that we're really understanding what could happen with each of these batteries. Um, and again, I, you know, I was looking from an advantage for the city is money in the pipeline, uh, you know, time is money, and the more that we can accommodate more expeditious schedule, then the greater chance I feel we could negotiate for more return um, and more advantage into the contract, you know, building in, you know, perhaps a um, a project labor agreement, perhaps, uh, perhaps putting a cap on how much would be expen- uh, how much would be taken on the demolition value. There are many ways to transfer into terms that we can negotiate to better our financial position. Um, so I feel really comfortable with that, but um, I'm not elected to run this as a business and to impose my personal views. I have- I'm not elected to run this as a business and to impose my personal views. I have heard, uh, the largest element here is we don't at this time have trust. And so what I would ask of you is this moves, instead of moving in March, it moves to September, that we cool the rhetoric. And as so many have, have mentioned tonight, whether it was the potluck or how many people have been here and care about our neighbors, we are all Blue Lakers and we can work on this together and finding good answers. Um, so, you know, where I was before to where I am now, I, I think that we have to build trust, um, before we leave this kind of decision on others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to say that I, I am in favor of this project. I think it is a good, there's been good, um, compensation on both sides with regards to negotiations on selling versus leasing. Um, we had the initial two acres that were, um, or sorry, initially six acres. They agreed to reduce it down to two acres, um, which I think was, um, very amicable. And then we would receive rent from the additional four acres. Um, I do think the location, I'm not, I'm not super keen on the location. Obviously, nobody wants contaminated water. Um, nobody wants a propane tank to potentially go off and cause the batteries to blow up. Um, I think if there was a major disaster such as Ruth Dam being destroyed and flooding the valley, that probably the batteries would be the least of our concerns. Um, however, I hear all you guys. I was voted in by you guys, and I, I'm not going to push something on you that you don't want. Um, so I just wanted to make that note. Thank you. Is the council ready to entertain a vote for directive discussion?
Are we going to make a motion? Well, I would move that we do not approve this accelerated timeline.
I'd second that. Would that begin to provide, maybe we should just have to shift to the September timeline?
Well, we just stick with the original ERN, do we not?
Yeah, I, I, I think some, some additional direction that the council is interested in continuing this, you know, continuing the negotiations, I think would be helpful. I mean, we don't have to do it on expedited timeframe, and we can kind of set a schedule for continued review, um, of the deal, assuming we have a willing negotiating partner on the other side. Um, so we can report back at the next meeting, kind of what power transitions initial thoughts are. Um, and then we can decide then kind of what the direction to staff would be in terms of further negotiation. Um, but, um, you know, I think for my purposes tonight, um, hearing that you don't want to move on the accelerated timeframe is, is the direction that I need, um, so that we don't do the work in, in order to get you to a point where you could make that decision next month.
Do we want to vote?
We bet, let's take a vote. All those in favor of, um, not going with the expedited timeline?
Aye.
Aye. All those wanting the expedited timeline?
I wish it wasn't called an expedited timeline. Uh, but I will go with them.
All right. Three to two. Um, three, three, sorry, excuse me. Three in favor of not going with the expedited timeline. Two opposed. It does not pass. Thank you. All right. Moving on to future agenda items.
I have a couple, uh, if I can give them. Um, I would like to see a mid-year budget review, revision, and amendments, if that's possible. I don't know what it's called. Mid, mid-year.
Mid-year review, yeah.
Yeah. Budget review, like where are we at? What do we need to adjust? What are we anticipating? What's that looking like? And I would also like to invite HWMA, um, at some future date to discuss, um, waste management.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Please stay engaged as we move forward. Just because we're all riled up now. It's great, but we need you to stay involved. Not tonight.
Do you have a regular public comment? If it's not agenda, yeah. If it's agenda, then of course.
Uh, any other future agenda items? Sorry, I forgot to just.
I think the, um, city, well, we had been an ad hoc for city clerk position. The city manager has, um, made a request, but I think that we should make this an agenda item, perhaps, to discuss what the structure of the city clerk, uh, duties and hours might be. Is it a part-time? Is it full-time? Um, I'm not sure if that's appropriate for an agenda item. I think, I think yes.
I think you guys, the, when I went through your, the meeting, though, you guys had made a motion to move forward through the ad hoc and to advertise and then have the council be involved in the process of, um, reviewing and hiring. So I feel like that's, if that's, that'll be a change then to what your prior motion was.
Uh, when did you, when was that motion made?
When you guys put your ad hoc together. Part of it was to...
As a result of the findings with the ad hoc?
Yeah, the ad hoc was to work on a recruitment and then advertise, and then the council would be part of, um, the hiring process.
Well, I saw where we, um, and you can help me if I, if I, uh, misremember. Um, but we had, but we definitely had indicated as an ad hoc that we wanted you to be able to move forward, uh, but with limitations on how much that would be on the contract fulfillment. But we went, um, beyond the hours we requested, and we kind of targeted that scope to be able to provide assistance here in the meeting because we can, you know, it is a great deal that you would have to deal with here. But I don't think that, um, extended to the conversation of, uh, having a, you know, having a designated city clerk here. Um, so I think that is something that, um, you know, as we had found, is something that takes further discussion. I think it, I think it should extend beyond ad hoc findings.
Was it, just to clarify, was it that there was a temp position that was requested to be recruited for relief from the minutes duties essentially for the meetings, but then a further discussion later, um, per the ad hoc findings and recommendations to explore the, um, essential duties of the city clerk and the position itself and its status as being per diem, part-time or full-time, et cetera. And, um, that was, that's what I remember.
Yeah, the actual motion was to form an ad hoc to put together a job posting and review applications. And that was, um, four A's and one abstained. John, uh, appointed Kat and Michelle to the ad hoc. It was a little bit, yeah, I think we just had a lot of extra discussion afterwards, but when I went back and reviewed the, um, the video to you, it substantiated that motion. Because when I was doing the minutes, I was like, is that really what happened? But I think then after that, there was just a lot of continued dialogue. So I'm happy to do it, however you guys want to do it.
Right. And then I think just maybe it's another multiple months out. Right.
Well, what's the current status? Is there something, some recruitment happening?
My recollection is that recommendations were submitted to Mandy for, um, position and job description, et cetera. And I think that that's kind of where we are.
Yeah, I think the ad hoc came back with a recommendation to, um, hire, see about attempt service to take meeting minutes. And I asked if we could further discuss the, the recruitment for an actual clerk, because the timeline to go and try and find a temp service to find someone to try and take meeting minutes, we're just losing more and more time when we could focus actually just on a position and getting someone on board who would be doing this regularly.
And that's been posted or it's not?
No.
Do we have a timeline on posting?
I think that's what we're trying to clarify right now.
Are we able to just give direction to staff to start hosting that job? Well, I, I think, when you post a job, you have to be clear about what the job description is, the hours and duties. And I think that is something that, uh, the council should examine. Um, you know, is it going to be a full-time? Is it going to be part-time? Would it just be per diem? Um, and I think that this is something that the conversation, you know, should be with not just the ad hoc at this point, but the whole of the council with the city manager, um, to see what that might look like. It's been some time that we, uh, well, we had a city clerk for a bit. Um, but I think that, you know, that's a representative, that's a direct path for the public to the council. I think it's an important position. Um, and I think that, you know, if this is an appointed position by the council, then we certainly should give some consideration to what those duties would be. I agree.
Right.
Absolutely.
But I think that we gave direction for the temp position for the relief of minutes taking from Mandy in addition to polishing up the job description and coming clear on the duties and then looking at recruitment for a part-time, full-time, ext, whatever position. That's so I, I think that it's, she has the...
So it seems...
The go to recruit for attempt.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, then we could begin recruitment and say that it's part-time, temporary, and with the potential to evolve into a full-time, you know, part-time or full-time benefited. And could we just, no?
I, I, this is a future agenda item discussion. We can't really discuss the actual item.
Okay.
We need to agendize it.
Thank you.
Let's put it on the agenda.
So do we want to bring that forward as a future agenda item? Yes or no?
Yes. And that's a high priority item, so I think it could be on our very next meeting.
At that meeting, I would really like to ask for clear direction at that point. Because I'm, I'm getting buried. We've had a lot of meetings and I'm, I'm like buried in meeting minutes at this point.
Okay. Uh, any other future agenda items?
And will we have the benefit of all of ad hoc documentation and everything to think about before? I mean, that'll be in the agenda packet. I'm assuming.
I don't think I could distribute that tonight.
No, I don't need it. I don't, no, just saying for the, yeah. All you. Okay.
All right. Um, any other future agenda items?
I'd like to form an ad hoc committee to talk about power plants in the non-power transitions, uh, as it does not relate to power transitions. Everything else, power plant related, not property related. I'd like there to be an ad hoc committee for that.
And point of clarification, Ryan, we do, I can, we cannot form an ad hoc outside of council, or we can from ad hoc outside of council.
So the, the formation of an ad hoc can be done by the council. Um, formation usually includes forming the ad hoc and then appointing those folks to it. Um, so it should probably happen together.
Okay.
Uh, the mayor has the authority to appoint members to ad hoc committees. Mayor can also, in your discretion, put it to a nomination process if you don't want to make the appointment yourself.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Would that have any conflict with the exclusive negotiating red agreement that we have?
Again, it depends. I mean, having an ad hoc committee in and of itself to talk about the power plant is fine. Um, we just need to make sure the discussions are in line with the exclusive negotiating agreement. Like, if we want to talk about going out to an RFP for, um, demolition, looking at bond funding for demolition remediation, um, those things are perfectly okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items before we move on?
Do you have a public comment on that, too?
I will.
Can we, can we put a follow-up to the resident on Broderick who has, uh, has both damage to their property and, uh, concerns regarding the runoff from Prash Hall? Is that part of item number one, city communication? Or that's separate? I'm sorry, say again? Number one on this sheet was city communication. This is the last, the last sheet of our... I don't have that listed, so, oh, no. Um, well, anyway, we wanted to talk about city communication. That was one of the things that's been hanging out on the sheet. It's, if it's on the agenda already, thank you. I apologize. Well, no, it's in the queue, but we don't have it set for a date. So you want that on the next meeting? I, I, you know, I think that we are still in wet weather, and I think this resident has asked for assistance, um, with this for some time. Uh, if we can afford some time to get them on the agenda and discuss and see what we can do or can't do, um, I think it would be a benefit to that resident.
Ryan, we were also going to have you come forward, I think at this meeting, but obviously you've been busy, um, with, uh, agenda setting process. Have we developed that?
Yeah, I, I think that's part of your, um, city council roles and responsibility manual update. That was going to be looked at in that, and I think that's scheduled for April.
So, but we're continuing this process until then?
I think, yeah, this process is fine.
Okay, great. Uh, future agenda items for the public?
I strongly suggest that you do form that ad hoc. I did a site tour down there of the, of the, uh, facility down there, the power thing. And, uh, there are currently death traps there with doors that are openable. You've got major potential liability for that. And this, this is something that just about, in my opinion, if, if somebody else dies, there, a child or anybody, it, it's a, it's a terrible accident just waiting to happen. Um, so I do agree with the need to move very rapidly. And I don't think, I don't know, you probably can instruct staff to do it, but, uh, one, one day that, one extra day that causes a child, and I think this is just common sense. I think you can just hope your staff would just go ahead and take care of that for you, button that up, lock all these things up that are open there. I'm happy to spend some time and show them my major concern for safety. It could be, uh, be life-threatening for some poor innocent child.
Thank you. Uh, any other further comment, or excuse me, public, um, comment? Andrew, you have your hand up? Andrew?
Yeah, you hear me? Uh, so, so, so going, going back to the, the, I think it was agenda seven, there was a, it's mostly a process. You, you can, you can hear me, you can hear me fine. You, you can hear me fine, right? Okay, good. So, so, so during earlier public comment, uh, over the, I, I believe it was agenda item seven, uh, there was a commenter, I believe her name was Jamie Bolton, a Blue Lake resident. Um, and after a minute and a half, she was cut off and, uh, taken aback by being cut off. Uh, but then it was determined that she had another minute and a half. And I could tell, and I think everyone else could tell afterwards, she, her, her comments were chilled. So that was a chilling moment, and that was a violation of the free speech right. Um, and then secondly, there was another commenter, uh, about a minute later.
Your agenda items, I'm, I'm really sorry. Is, can we, is there any future agenda items? Do you want to comment on?
So the fut, the future agenda item is that you're chilling free speech by your actions during your meetings. And so that action, when you, as mayor, stepped in and told Jamie Bolton to stop talking after a minute and a half, even though she had another minute and a half to speak, chilled her speech. Okay, so that, that is an agenda item. That is, that is a violation of her constitutional rights. That is a future agenda item. And I think that you guys need to really figure this out, right? You need to really figure out how to conduct a meeting and to allow people to speak, which you're having trouble with right now. which you're having trouble with right now. And I'm about to tell you another episode of this same problem in which Mr. Goldstein was about, I think about two minutes later, if you review the tape, he was allowed to question a commenter while they were commenting and they stopped. Review it, please. Review that, review that agenda item, please. But you cannot allow a project proponent. You cannot allow a project proponent. You cannot allow it.
Thank you, Andrew.
So you're going to cut me off?
No, I put a note to look at the violation of uh, meeting rules. So that'll be something we'll look into. Thank you, Andrew. All right, uh, Julie, you have a future agenda item?
Yes, I do, John. And as comical and serious as it is, it does tie into your prior speaker. I really would like to get an agenda item, particularly to like technology. Um, we continue to have issues with Zoom and it seems to be intentional. And I'm going to be honest with that, but perhaps we could dig into it more on the technical side. I have suggestions also, getting back to like minutes and the city clerk. We have amazing technology as well that we could maybe shortcut some um, clerical duties with using AI to do our minutes. And also within Justin's recordings, it could be something that then gets us to certain points in each recording that people can just skip ahead. They already know where the mile marker is. So I think one thing that we could do is really get up on our tech stuff. It's a kind of a broad agenda topic. Don't get me wrong. We're encompassing a lot of things with our tech. But I, I think it's something that would eventually um, save a lot of money and save a lot of um, public, public rapport with everybody. So just a thought there. We have a lot of avenues to go with it, but there's a lot of options we could use. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That made me remember that there is one more topic that I really think we should get hammered out and that is um, access to videos. Um, I have a proposition um, that would make access to videos very easy, very simple, nearly instantaneous at the end of meetings. And I'd like to bring that forward very soon.
Thank you very much. Do you want to, um, maybe we can get more clarification at a later time on that? Yeah.
Like, yeah.
Okay, great.
It would take minutes. It's not, it's not a, it's not a big thing.
Okay.
Just make it happen.
Last call for future agenda items? All right. Let's see here, sorry.
So.
All right, we are moving on to council correspondence. Do we have any council correspondents?
Uh, yes, you do have several uh, letters. I believe these were all sent to council as well. So there's photocopies here um, if you need them. Um, but we did forward these on. Um, and I believe you guys were all separately included um, in the emails as well, so.
Is that that same letter that was coming from different people?
Yeah, so there are several letters in support of the best project. Um, there's letters from uh, Kit Mann. Um, and then there's uh, correspondence from Becky Thornton.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you want to go ahead and pass those out, I guess, just so we have them. Thanks.
I think there's only a couple copies of each since you guys were, it was sent to everyone.
Okay. Yes.
Mandy, what is the disposition of the letters afterwards? Are they available for the public to come in if they wanted to read them or?
Yeah, we have a um, a file that they go into.
All right.
Yeah, just a public record act request. Correspondence? Um, no, unless it comes in through the packet. So if it comes in time for the council agenda, then it all gets scanned into the packet. But these are uh, correspondence that came in after the packet, so we just have to make copies and we forward them onto council.
Yeah, sorry, everyone, we needed to bring it back. What was the point order about? I'm sorry. Please, um, go ahead and finish your question for Mandy.
Me?
Did you have your question?
How, how, how can we make council correspondence available to public if they wish to see it? How does that work?
Just have to ask for it.
So you're like an individual would come and ask you for a copy of the council correspondence?
Yes. I mean, in the past, I mean, you guys don't get a lot of council correspondence. In the past, um, the mayor chose whether they read it into the record. Adeline literally would read every single correspondence into the record. Um, so it's uh.
Maybe just mention what that one's about, because the rest of them are all about the best.
We, we generally do. Um, let's go ahead and, do we want to read the correspondence?
Um, not tonight.
Um, so we're going to go ahead and move into closed session. Um, do you guys have any public comments on the items we're going into closed session about? I apologize, thank you. We are going into closed session, um, uh, conference for legal counsel on significant exposure to litigation, one case. Um, we're going into a conference um, with real, real, sorry, excuse me, conference with real property negotiations?
No, that was.
Oh, thank you. And then um, the other items are closed. So we're just going in for the first one I listed, which was the conference with legal counsel, significant exposure. Oh, thank you, sorry. And public employment performance evaluation. Yes, go ahead.
Well, this, this is a very serious issue and it's unfortunate. We don't know what it is, but we are not entitled to know what your potential litigation is. It's something that, you know, what we can, I, in the supervisor, I can hypothesize. I mean, we had a, we had a, a desk down at our facility down there. It could be that. There's a whole long list of things that it potentially could be. The main thing is, is, is to deal with those things uh, and try and pre-settle them in some way or uh, get them out of the way. It, it comes to negotiations on those things a lot of times. A lot of entities like Humboldt County used to have very good counsel and they were very proficient along with their CEO of getting rid of litigation before it came to cost. You know, they didn't fund the lawyers and things. So uh, that's hopefully a skill set that you have access to, someone who can be a peacemaker and get those things off your plate as quickly as possible. And again, to avoid those things. When it comes down to uh, your um, dealing with your assessment of a, of your staff member, um, I hope you will take an objective look historically at things that have happened here over the time uh, and, and find that what you saw here with all these people speaking, we, we did the same thing on another project, which was the Anco project, and we got totally ignored. I appreciate you folks listening and taking, taking different things, no matter how you voted, but you listened. And so that's something that needs to be done. The other assessment is, is that I brought forward to you, there is a particular part of this uh, contract that states between January, January first and I think April 29th or something, you are to have a, a, a setting of your goals. And this is something you're supposed to do. And each year then you base your assessment of performance based upon how that person did your goals. I did a PRA request. That process was not listed. I received some other comments that were the outcome of something which I probably shouldn't have gotten, but that process doesn't happen. So how do you recommend? You look at the contract and understand the specific verbiage that is included in there because this is where the public and you get to participate and get your goals and objectives. And that's important for all of us to be involved in. So hopefully you'll look at that when you, when you have your evaluation. Thank you for having me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing no others, we'll go ahead and bring it up to Zoom. Andrew, go ahead.
Yes, I'm on mute myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay? Great. Wonderful.
And I just wanted to, you know, I agree with the last speaker. I really wish you the best. I hope the best for Blue Lake. Um, I really wish that that site uh, has been restored in the next five years into a public park. And you know, children are playing in the creeks and the river and uh, I really worry about what.
Did it to the closed session items we spoke of?
What?
Is this related to the, the closed session items?
Yeah, so um, get on you. Hey, bully on.
All right. Ryan, can we move on? Okay. Elaine, go ahead.
Hi, thanks everyone. Good job. Um, this is an intense and very long meeting and now you're going into closed session. So just want to say congratulations. You guys are doing a great job. And in regards to the closed session item for um, our city manager review, I know that there may be differences in opinion in the direction that the city is going and I just want to commend our city manager. Um, I think we're very, very lucky to have a city manager who is local and has a progressive perspective on how to really drive grant revenue and leverage different options that the city has um, in the benefit for all of us. And so I realize that there are differences of opinion in how that's going. And I think that's totally appropriate to have public discourse and dialogue. But I also just want to recognize that for a small city like this, we are extremely lucky to have a city manager that in my opinion is working for about half the amount of salary that she should be. Um, and is extremely dedicated and working 24/7 for the city. So um, I just encourage you all to keep that in mind, that even though there might be differences of opinion, we have a city manager that is dedicated and that really cares about our city. And I think we're extremely lucky um, because we are only a city of 1,200 people. So our chances of, you know, attracting and recruiting um, others that you may think look better or that we could have something better, I would just really encourage everyone to value the dedication of the city manager that we have. So when you're um, considering her performance evaluation. So thank you and great job and um, hope you all get a good night's sleep.
Excellent. Julie, go ahead.
Thank you, guys. I'll be quick. I want to um, go with the sentiments of prior speaker Kent and um, our prior speaker Elaine Hogan, um, chairman of our planning commission and head of the Great Redwood Trail. Um, I think there are a lot of things that should be reviewed within the contract. I did do uh, public records requests on that. Um, that's been negligence in the past. We still have an archive of information that's been withheld from the public. We've had our commissions ran um, outside of the preview of our council. You guys review, access Humboldt, try and get the videos that were redacted, never made public comment or public um, before Justin started recording. You know, a lot of people don't understand that there has been a lot going on for a long time that might have built up to a lot of the issues that we're still dealing with. For example, at this meeting tonight, um, your first session there with closed session with the like, you know, legality thing with whatever you got going on there. I just caution that you guys are taking a lot on your shoulders. It's not yours. However, just use your best discernment. Um, don't be afraid that stuff's going to haunt you because you did the right thing. Nobody should ever be afraid that something's going to haunt them because they did the right thing. They should be worried about the opposite. So I have faith in you guys. Stay strong tonight, get some water and get on to the next one. Bye.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and.
A motion that we go into closed session.
We have a first and a second, all of those in favor of going to closed session?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, and passage unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.